I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February the 13th, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m. and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street of Granbury, Texas. This is a regular Texas Open Meetings Act, regular meeting of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas. Today we have with us a very prominent associate pastor here in Hood County, Diane Raspberry from the Hope Community Church to give us invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity that we have to come together and to do the things that you've called us to do, Father. We ask that you help us to make those decisions that are according to your will. Father, we ask that you bless the Commissioners and protect them and protect their families. Father, we ask that you be with the county employees that are here and bless them and protect them also. Father, we ask that you help us to come together in unity, to make those decisions that are best for our community, for our county. And Father, we ask that you be in the midst of this situation, Father, that you be in the midst of this meeting and that all things done are bring honor and glory to you, Lord. Father, we just want to love you and we just want to thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I pledge the great state of Texas, honor and respect its life. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. There are no special awards or service awards today, right? Okay, good, because we've got a large docket here today. Let me tell the citizens up here, everybody knows by now that if you want to speak either at-large or on any agenda item, that you have to fill out a public participation form and hand it to Sheriff Deeds, who in turn will then give it to Katie Lane, the county commissioner, county clerk, and she will number it. And some of y'all want to speak on more than one topic, and you try to put it all on one sheet. That is too hard to maintain the bookkeeping records because you may be number one on one topic, but you may number six on another. So if you're going to speak on more than one topic, you're going to have to fill out from this day forward a separate public participation form for each topic or each agenda item you want to speak on, okay? So please remember that. So let me, you got a bunch of people wanting to speak on things today. Did you have any at-large? I don't see any so far on this thing. You got one? Is that the only at-large?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Harold Granick, and you Al Paso on it, aren't you? So we don't have any at-large speaking today then. Okay. Let me see. All right. We're going to do something a little different here. We have a large docket here today, and we have from us two esteemed members of, geez, from TNP that are going to speak, and we're going to take item 18 first. That's the last item, and we're going to take it first because it's something, geez, because it's something I think we all agree upon that needs to be done, and we want to get these two very expensive engineers out of here and off of our deal. I see Steve Berry's up there laughing about it, so he understands that. So anyway, what I'm going to do, let me read it to us right quick. Item number 18, discuss and take appropriate action to allow TNP to revise scope and fee proposal for Old Granbury Road to include plans, specifications, and estimates, PSE, for the construction of Old Granbury Road from the 377 intersection to Temple Hall Highway. This would include intersection construction and widening efforts based upon plans already conducted by city and county. And we have today two people that have spoken to us so many times about this. We have Joe Atwood and Ryan Adams, please come up here, and let's kick it off and tell us what you have. And you have handed to each, to me and each of the Commissioners, the Old Granbury Road project right here that we just got here this morning. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning to you, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. So my name is Ryan Jones. I'm with TNP. We're an engineering design consultant in Fort Worth, Texas. We've been working with both Hood County and the city of Granbury on a few different things here recently. One of them is the Old Granbury Road potential project that we've been discussing. My plan, unless Judge or any of the Commissioners had had something else you'd like to speak on first, my plan was to kind of give a background on the Old Granbury Road project, what we've accomplished so far, what's been completed, where we're currently at, and then a few different options for the way forward. And so if it's okay, I'll go ahead and present that. Is that?
Let me, let me throw something in, sir, and I appreciate you all coming in here. Just to give everybody some background, we had a joint meeting with the school board, the city of Granbury, and the Commissioners Court a couple of weeks ago, and had this discussion of this item on that agenda. And after the, after that meeting, I spoke with Mr. Jones, and we discussed, what do we need to do just to get started? What do we need to do to get something going? I know that I've been on this Commissioners Court now for five years, and we've been talking about this ever since I've been on here. And, you know, my, we know that 377 project is looming. We don't know when that's going to start, but it will. And even if we started something tomorrow, it would be a couple, it would be some years to get Old Granbury Road widened out and expanded where we can have some way to get around 377, once they do take that down to one lane. And I know it's not necessarily a detour. It's not being called that, but, you know, where else are people going to go? They're going to try to figure out a way to get around 377. So I put this on the agenda for this very reason. I appreciate the judge being willing to bump this up to the front so that these gentlemen can give their presentation, and I hope that we can get something to move forward after today. Thank you. And I appreciate you coming, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here. You mentioned a timeframe. If we were to start now, I think, and the funding was in place for construction, you're looking at likely four years from start of the planning and design process until construction is complete. We estimate about two years for a design phase and then about two years for construction. So with this being 2024, that would put us in the year 2028 for construction completion. A quick note on what we've done so far on this project, just to get everybody in the loop, and as a refresher, the city of Granbury contracted with TNP back in August of 2023 last year to perform some preliminary traffic analysis of Old Granbury Road, because Old Granbury Road was identified as a critical corridor with the looming 377 construction and some developments occurring along the road. So that traffic study evaluated the existing configuration of Old Granbury Road and how that existing configuration, the two-lane undivided roadway, would handle the projected and forecasted traffic increases that are coming in the next five, 10, and 15 years. And what we, what we analyzed, what the results of that preliminary analysis indicate that improvements are definitely needed to Old Granbury Road. It's performing adequately in today's, with today's traffic. We measure performance, it's called level of service is our, is our metric, that we measure performance when we're doing traffic analysis, and the level of service was fine today, but we noticed the, the results showed that in the next five and 10 years, the level of service will start to degrade, especially the segment between. So our study looked at from 377 all the way up through Meander intersection, through Temple Hall, and then eventually all the way up to Industrial. We looked at that whole, whole limits of Old Granbury Road. What the study indicated is that the segment between 377 and Temple Hall was really the first segment that we noticed that level of service deteriorating, and that occurred in the year 2028. And then, you know, from there, it just, it just kind of went downhill when we looked at the year 2033 and eventually to the year 2038, which is the 15-year horizon. And so the results of that study indicate that improvements are definitely needed to Old Granbury Road. That's our, that's our belief and our recommendation to the county and to the city. What we don't know yet is what those improvements need to be exactly. When you look at the county and the city's master thoroughfare plan, that indicates a four-lane undivided. But there's likely also some improvements needed to the intersections of Meander and Temple Hall, that things like turn lanes, things like, is a signalized intersection required? Maybe a roundabout would make, make more sense. All those things still need to be looked at. We need to look at if we were to widen the roadway to three, three lanes or four lanes, how much right-of-way would be needed? How much is that going to cost? So those are questions that, that we don't have answers for today. As a result of that, we did, we've provided the county and the city a proposal for TNP to do a more detailed study, in which we would come up with answers and recommendations through collaboration with, with the county, through collaboration with the city. We would come up with recommendations for improvements. We would tell you how much those improvements are going to cost. We would tell you when those improvements are needed, and through that, we would really begin to formulate a plan of improvement for, for this corridor. And that's what we discussed, Dave, as you mentioned, at the last interlocal meeting with the county, with the city, with the ISD. Since then, we did have some more discussions that seems, sounds like there's some interest, not only to study and come up with the answers of what improvements are needed, but also then to take those recommendations and take them into what we call plans, specs, and estimate for construction, PSNE, is the acronym. Engineers like acronyms when we're talking about this kind of stuff. But ultimately, what that would deliver would be construction documents for, you take those documents, you'd hand them to a contractor after, after you bid it and award it, and then they would go and they would construct the project. So part of the discussion today is, is going to be, is that, is that something that we want to do? And then what options, what would that, what that might look like? There's a couple of different ways we can, we can, we can do that. So I guess if I was going to present you three options, the first option would be, we could just go ahead and execute our, our contract to do the, the detailed study and come up with some answers, some recommendations, and then, you know, six, seven months from now, we can circle back. Once we've all got consensus on what those improvements need to be, we can then come up with a new contract for us to take into the PSNE detailed final design phase, and that would be where we produce the documents for construction. So that's option one, is just to move forward with the proposal you already have in your hands. Option two would be, and this, and then we do, we do this for, we do this for projects all the time for multiple different clients, is you package the preliminary engineering with the final engineering, the PSNE. You package those both together into a single contract in which TNP would, would be contracted to take it from the preliminary engineering all the way to the final design phase, and we would, we would then deliver those construction documents. The, the pro to that is that you, you streamline the process, because you have one contract that we get executed right now, and there's no delay, there's no timeframe, there's no lag between the preliminary and the final engineering. You just go straight from one to the next. The con to that is that we don't have all the answers right now, right? So there's still some unknowns, and, you know, when you're, when there are unknowns, you have to account for that in your, in your scope and your, your contract. And so there's, you know, there would have to be some accounting for the, the unknowns and the risk factors that are out there, just because we don't have all the answers yet. We, we've done some thinking since we had the conversation, Dave, with you, and since this has been a, a topic here in the recent weeks, we've done some discussion internally. And we've done some other contracts with other counties where we think it would be, this might be a good, a good option for this project and in this situation, is to modify our current contract for the study to include a task that has no, no fee attached to it and is not authorized, but would then be authorized at a later date, once we finish the, the study and the preliminary design. Pro, the, the benefit to that is that it basically establishes a commitment from the county that, hey, we're going to take this from preliminary engineering to construction. We just don't know what that construction's going to look like yet. And so once we know what that's going to look like, then we'll, you know, amend our contract to, to account for those improvements and assign a fee for the, for that design. But at that time, the benefit to that is, at that time, you'll know exactly what the improvements are we're going to be proposing, and you'll have a scope and a fee that's tailored directly to those improvements. And so there's some, there's some logic behind structuring a contract like that, and we can call that out for free. And that's kind of a compromise between what we currently have in your hands in terms of a preliminary engineering study and what it would look like to fully negotiate a contract for preliminary and, and final construction documents right now. So you got kind of the three options, and, and you know, we're not here for, for our interests, TNP's interests. What would be most beneficial for TNP is for, for us to tell you to go ahead and, and let's get a contract for preliminary and, and final engineering for construction documents now, and let's get the scope and the fee all negotiated now. What we really want to do is, is help the county decide what, what's best for the county's interest on this project, and that really depends on what the county's priorities are. And so we're here to help you make that decision, but we're not here to tell you what that needs to be, because we really want what's best for the county and the city on this project. So hopefully that, that helps. If I've, if there's something that's been unclear, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions and, and discuss further. The process for projects like these generally looks like you have your, your, your planning phase, then you have to program your funds, and then you move into that final design for, for construction and implementation. Right now, we're, we're talking about kind of the planning phase. I think an important consideration for the county when we're, when we're looking at this project is going to be funding. We've done some really high-level estimates. We think the ultimate cost for the project from 377 up to Temple Hall is going to be about $50 million for construction. And so I think that's, we, I didn't want to leave that with, leave that unsaid, because I think that's a, that's an important consideration when we're talking about this, and that will be funding ultimately, that will need to be committed to the project. Engineering, what we do is, is a relatively small percentage of the overall project cost. The construction's really where the meat of the cost is, and so I did want to make sure that was, y'all were informed and educated on that, on what we've looked at in terms of cost for the project, so.
Brian, I have a question. You mentioned on, I don't remember, option two or option three, to modify the contract that we have in our hand. What, I mean, this is an example contract, so I'm, I'm not sure what contract you're referring to.
Yes, so we provided the, the county and the city back in November of 2023, Old Granbury Road Planning Study Contract Proposal. It was a proposal, it's not a contract yet.
Okay.
But it's a scope and a fee, basically, to do the planning phase of the project, where we would look at what developments are going to occur on Old Granbury Road, and we would look at, we would refine some of the growth, the traffic growth projections and forecasting, and, and reanalyze Old Granbury Road with improvements included, so we could, we could inform the county and help the county come up with what improvements are needed on Old Granbury Road. And at that point, we could assign costs to those improvements. We could tell you when we think those improvements need to take place in terms of timeframe. This project can be phased based on what we've.
Okay, just so I understand, what you're saying is, take the proposal that you sent us and create a contract out of that. You're not referring to the document that was presented at the joint interlocal?
I am referring to that document, yes.
Okay, well, the county is not a party to that document. That document was between the city and TNP, so there would need to be, there, there wasn't any, anything in there that referred to the county at all. That was a contract between the city and TNP, so.
That's true. My understanding is that there is, there's a desire for there to be a partnership in terms of the funding for that contract between, it would be an agreement between the city and the county, so it would be joint funded with participation from both entities. So you're right, it is, I think, structured as a contract with the city, but the discussions we've been a part of have involved joint participation.
Right, we would need, and that was one of the objections at that meeting, is that there was some discussion about sharing the cost, but there was nothing in writing that delineated out the terms and conditions of what the share would be, or the obligations of the city or the county. It was all between the city and TNP. So we would need to definitely have a different agreement, an interlocal agreement, or a three-way agreement, or something else that would detail out all the participants of the contract and what their obligations and terms and conditions were.
I agree. That's completely correct. Yeah, you would need a, you would need a separate interlocal agreement to make sure everybody was in agreement on the funding participation. That's correct.
Yes, Commissioner, that's kind of why I put it on here, is to get all this on the table and let, put it on the table for the other Commissioners, the county judge, to throw, you know, discuss this, because again, my take on it is, let's get started. You know, let's get something going, let's, and we need, the city's got about four and a half miles of Old Granbury Road, if I'm correct. This is for the whole nine-mile stretch from 377 all the way to Crescent. The county's got the, the other, but the county, but the city's in the county, and we need to, we, we're definitely going to have to all work together and decide who's going to do what, and, but for me, it's like, let's get started. I'm tired of studies. We know we need four, we know, we've talked about this before, we need, we know we need four lanes. That's, we don't need a study for that, we know we need four lanes, and there's going to be developments coming in, I know, but those can be, that, we don't know how that's going to play out, and we can't predict the future in that, where exactly. So I'm kind of, I kind of like the idea of the planning, programming, and implementation, let's get it, let's start. And I'm hearing from my constituents, especially out in my, you know, this is in my precinct, and people want us to do something. And this is the first time I've seen a $50 million price tag. We've got, we've also got talk of either new jail or jail expansion, there's another $100 million potentially. We've got school bonds coming up, that they're getting ready to hit us with another school bond, they're going to want $160 million. There's a lot of projects coming up to be laid onto the taxpayers' back, and we need to decide what priorities there are, in my opinion. And ingress, egress, and roads to and from and through is a priority. So that's my little soapbox.
I do want to clarify one thing. So our, our study that we've currently proposed as part of the planning phase is from 377 to Industrial, it's not the full nine miles all the way up to Crescent.
Right, and we're, we're talking actually, if you go on past Industrial headed toward Crescent, we have been working with the DOT on the Walnut Creek Bridge, for instance, and they were, they were scheduled to redo that bridge in 2025, next year. And Mr. Lenny and I have had a discussion with DOT and just went ahead and said, look, let's just go to four lanes on it. So of course, they freaked out, and we got to start all the way over again, but it's like, we might as well just start, we, there's no sense doing it twice. So that's in, that's in the works when you get past Industrial.
Yeah, and you mentioned developments. We have been in contact with Tina, the mayor of Crescent, and she's, she's let us know of at least three new housing developments, including one that's over 2,000 ultimate build-out, 2,000 lot ultimate build-out. So that we, we know for sure there's developments that are coming, that's not even, it's not a guess at this point, we know they're coming. We're in contact with those designers and with the city of Crescent, and there, I'm sure there's going to be more than those three, so. And even, even without accounting for those developments, the, the forecasting of the current conditions indicate Old Granbury Road needs to be improved. So we, we believe that's pretty much a fact, it's just at this point figuring out exactly what those improvements are, when they need to happen, and then how we want to, what path we want to take to move forward to construction and figuring those answers out. So there's a lot of different, you know, I mentioned three options, there may be more options than that, but there's, there's multiple options that we can get there. We just need to figure out which option best serves the county's needs and which ones, which option y'all are comfortable with pursuing, so.
As far as money's concerned, you know, you got a, you told us if y'all started tomorrow, it'd be four years likely, and I know that when they started the Crescent bypass, we're coming up on six years, it seems like. Yeah, Steve's back there nodding his head, because I remember going out there when they were getting ready to start that deal, and it's been, they're not done yet. So four years, it could be longer than that, who knows? But, you know, I'm kind of like, my take on is, we need to get going, so. And the $50 million, if it's $50 million, you can phase it, right?
That's correct.
We have different, we have different vehicles to finance, we got, we just did something on the, some VFD equipment, volunteer fire departments, a certificate, a tax certificate that we can go up to seven years on that, there's certificates of obligation. Do you do a bond? Do you put the whole thing up for one big bond, or do you break it up into three or four parts? We've got a lot of options, I think, as far as the financing is concerned from the county side. I would assume the cities on their side of it have the, the similar type of options.
That's correct, yep.
Well, this $50 million just takes it up through Temple Hall Highway.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you go on all the way to 377 at Crescent, you're going to have a lot more than $50 million.
Yes, sir, that, that's correct.
So let's, let's understand here, what we're trying to do is to get a plan started right now. The projection that y'all gave in the joint presentation to the city and the county was that from Old Granbury Road, from 377 to Temple Hall Highway gets us through, what, 2028? Is that?
Yes, it would get you through the year 2033.
2033.
2028 is when things start to deteriorate in terms of performance.
Okay. And, yeah, because if you wanted to do it all the way through Crescent, it's going to be a lot more than $50 million to do that planning.
So to give you an idea of, of cost, and if we were looking at phasing this thing.
Right. And with the homes, the homes that you just talked about, the $2,000 homes that's further towards Crescent, beyond Temple Hall Highway.
That's correct.
You've got the developers that are doing that, that needs to be taken into account so that the developers can pay some of that cost themselves, that's, don't just put that all on the county here, that should be figured into the price of the lots and spread out to them, too. Am I right?
Yes, there, what we see oftentimes is things like turn lanes and stuff. If there's a turn lane needed for entrance to a development, the developers participate in the, in the costs associated with turn lanes and those sorts of things. So yes, you're correct. I think another important consideration there is, to get in front of, is that, you know, if, if we know the project's coming, and you can even do this now with your master thoroughfare plan, is you want to get the developers that are developing adjacent to the road to dedicate the right-of-way needed for the widened roadway. I know the city has, the city of Granbury has done that in certain locations already on the corridor, but that's something that we, we really want to also get in front of is, is right-of-way dedications, because there's definitely costs associated with, with acquiring the right-of-way as well.
Well, here's what, I'm all in favor of getting started, too, because it's something to get started, and I really. to get started, and I really do, so, I'm for.
I agree.
Just getting something to go right now through Temple Hall Highway, because we know that that's in the $50 million ballpark right there. If we're gonna go all the way to Crescent, it's what, three times, twice as far?
Yes, sir, so.
Estimate.
So, three, yeah, estimated, 377 to Temple Hall is 2.6 miles. If you go from 377 up to industrial, which were the limits of our preliminary study, that's four and a half miles. If you go all the way up to Crescent, that's nine miles, and so you can kind of do the math on, if it's, if two and a half, roughly two and a half miles are 50 million dollars, then five miles would be double that, and then, well, I'm trying to do the math in my head, but nine miles would be almost, you could say, just under $200 million for their, their construction of nine miles of four-lane undivided. And that's, that's high-level estimate, we, we kind of apply, based on projects we've, we've done and seen here recently, you can, for this kind of a roadway, you can estimate about $17 million a mile, and, and those costs potentially could go up. We haven't done detailed cost estimates, but those are high-level kind of rule of thumbs that we've been applying to this situation, so.
And just, just to clarify, your estimates to date have not included the impact of construction on 377, all your traffic studies, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so, I'm gonna try to distill your three different options, just so I understand what the options are. So, option one is moving forward with what was presented at the city, but creating an interlocal agreement to, to divide up the responsibilities of the city and the county, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's 228,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The second option is to do, include that, along with the projection of the final phase up to Temple Hall Highway.
That's correct.
But, there would be a lot of contingency built in, because you wouldn't have all the answers, so the contingency factor would be relatively high.
Exactly, yes, ma'am.
Okay, option three is a hybrid between one and two, which would include the 228,000 with the joint agreement between the city and the county and TNP, and then what I'm not clear about is how it differs from the, how we, do we take a pause, then, and do another estimate, to have a better?
The main difference, I believe, would be primarily just the commitment made within the contract, that the intent is to go from the preliminary engineering into the implementation and PSE phase.
Okay, so the, when you said it, the first option, it would be six to seven months, and then we'd have to circle back and do the PSE, instead of that, it would be, in the project plan, it would be, okay, we're done with the detailed study, let's now start without having to create another contract to start, is that correct?
It wouldn't be a separate contract, but it would be an amendment to our original, because at that, at that point, we would know all the answers in terms of what the improvements need to be, we could figure out which improvements we wanted to pursue at this time, and at that point, TNP would then provide an amendment to the contract to include TNP for those improvements.
Okay.
So, there's, you're right, there's not a whole lot of difference between, if you're calling that option, I think I called that option three, the hybrid, there's not a whole lot of difference between option one and option three, other than there's a, an intent and commitment kind of established within the contract, that that is the intent to move forward to construction documents after the preliminary design's complete. And we've done that with Dent County on, on other large projects, we've structured the contract that way. But like I said, it's, it's really ultimately, it's up to the county on what, which option you're comfortable pursuing, which option you believe is best for the county on this project. I'm not here to tell you to do this option or do that option. Hopefully, I'm providing enough information that's helpful, though, that, that you can make that decision. And, and you know, we're talking about $50 million, I think it's also worth noting, you know, we may, we may determine, you know, five different improvements needed to Old Granberry Road from the section of 377 to Temple Hall, that could include lane widening, maybe intersection improvements to Meander, maybe intersection improvements to, to Temple Hall. We don't have to do all of those at, at one time, you know, if you, if you give TNP the notice to proceed, in two years, we'll be ready to hand plans to a contractor. So, if, if $50 million is, is too high a, a number that we think is reasonable for a two-year timeframe to get funding for, we could pick and choose, you know, what the highest priority amongst the improvements is, and, and maybe that's, you know, 15 or 20 million dollars, or maybe that's $10 million of intersection improvement. I think that, that's gonna be the main benefit of getting through this preliminary engineering and the study that, that we've been talking about, is to have those answers, have those costs, and have the timetable established of when they're needed, so that we can really make those decisions at that time, and be, they would be more informed decisions than they would be today.
And at what point do we get the impact of the 377 construction on Old Granberry Road, is that within the first phase, the $228,000, the traffic studies of impact of people going around 377 onto Old Granberry Road?
In terms of analyzing Old Granberry Road and what that impact is gonna have for 377?
Right, if, if it's a correct statement to say your engineering studies to date and your traffic analysis haven't included the impact of construction on 377, when will it include the impact of the construction on 377?
That's a difficult, somewhat of a difficult question to answer, we could, we could probably do some analysis during the study to account for that. Typically, when we're doing studies, we're not looking at necessarily temporary conditions, which is what the construction would be, it would be a, a temporary condition.
For 10 years.
I don't know how long, I don't know how long they're planning on that construction taking, it, yeah, I, I don't know.
The challenge is, we don't have any funding for 377, there's nothing in the 10-year. Oh, okay, well, I was, I was letting Ryan run with this, and.
This is Joe Atwood, by the way.
Yeah, T. Don Perkins. So, yeah, the challenge is, you don't have any funding for 377 in the 10-year plan, there's nothing. So, to answer that question, I would say right now, there is no impact for relief.
No, 'cause you're, you're saying that TechStop will not do the project at, at this point?
TechStop does not have money, they don't have money, and there's nothing in the 10-year UTP, and there's definitely not anything in the three-year. So, not having that, that date nailed down by TechStop, it'd be hard to, to project what the effect would be. Now, what Ryan has done, he has shown you, without the effect of 377 construction, you know that you need to build it, and you, and, and I agree with Dave, you need to start now with, with something.
I just don't wanna spend money and build something that's inadequate in five years or four years.
Yeah, that's why the planning level, the, the contract that we have been talking about for six months, we need to confirm that, which I think we all understand, when you need the four lanes from 377 to Temple Hall. Money is important, the cost is significant to you and your constituents, I think, for you to represent your citizens fairly, you need to be accountable for the expense, and that's why we propose this, this contract structure that includes, right now, a basic service of the planning level for 228, and, and then have the, the contingency within the actual contract to move into the PSE phase, at which time, Ryan will know more precisely what it's gonna cost. If we give you that detailed design number now, it's gonna be too big, we will benefit in profit, and that's, that's not fair to use, not fair to your constituents. Does that clear things up?
I think so, and, and, I mean, I think it's also, you know, Old Granberry Road's not gonna be able to accommodate all the 377 traffic, I think that's important to understand, too, 'cause, you know, 377's a six, or is it six lanes, seven lanes of, of traffic, and you, you're not gonna be able to bypass that in, you know, to Old Granberry Road, there's.
I think Chris Kaufman has said that.
Right.
Over and over again, we're not gonna have a detour sign that, to take all the traffic off the 377, the construction, or down Old Granberry Road, that just won't work at all.
Right.
That's gonna be for the locals.
Right.
That live there to try to get around there, which, by the way, he signed up to speak here, and I think he'll probably address that soon, but.
Nor do I think the county would wanna pay for, you know, all of those improvements. If, and maybe, maybe it's 10 years, I don't know how long that construction's gonna last, but you, you would be paying for improvements, it, it would be a, a multi-year construction project, but ultimately, it would be temporary, and so you would be paying for improvements that then would maybe not be needed after five years, and I don't know that that's really what you wanna do, either. We could, we could, if that's something that you would like for us to look at, we can look at it in the, in the study phase.
Well, I just, in the intro, when Dave was talking, he mentioned the construction on 377, and I just, Commissioner Eagle, so I just wanted to confirm that that impact wasn't in any of your analysis to date.
Yeah, our, our analysis has not included that, so 377 would just, I guess, exacerbate the problems that we're already seeing.
Well, and I think it makes sense to go ahead and do all this engineering from beginning to end, and then pick the projects that are, that are funded in the future when that time comes, when that need, need comes up, but to go ahead and have everything ready to go and lined out, that just, that just makes sense.
So, I think everybody, when, at the intergovernmental meeting, I think everybody was kind of in agreement that it needs to be expanded through Temple Hall Highway, which is what your projection has done.
Yes, sir.
Take it into account the two intersections at Middle Road and Temple Hall Highway, plus the widening.
Yes, sir.
Right, for the road, okay. All right, well, we have two speakers that are lined up to speak, the first one is Chris Kaufman. Thank you, Ryan, and we'll probably.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Don't go far. Chris Kaufman, City Manager of Granberry, Texas.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, I'm here to learn, as well as, this was new to me, at our last meeting, we distributed an agreement from TNP for this $228,000. We, we, the council took action, they're interested in moving forward, so we're here, I'm here today to try to figure out how to facilitate moving forward the way y'all wanna move forward. And so, I would like to point something out, that based on the, the math and the equations that have been presented in the past, it's basically a 60-40 split of, of responsibility if, if the Commissioners Court wants the city to participate. So, you know, we all know that we're all a subset, Granberry's a subset of the county, you have road and bridge tax that we all pay as citizens throughout the county, but if you still want us to pay more, we'll pay that 40%, and that's what we voted on at that intergovernmental meeting. So, but I would like to mention that, you'll recall that, you know, this has been going on since last spring, and y'all, we all talked at the intergovernmental meeting then, and the city took the, the lead to go do a little preliminary study, and that, that preliminary study cost $13,754, and so, what we're talking about here is a $228,000 agreement, and, and we would like to add the $13,700 to it, to give it a total of cost of $241,000, which 60% of that would be paid by the county at $145,05283, and the city's portion would be 19,000, or 96,70189, of which, we've already paid $13,754, leaving a balance of 82,947. So, if you add the 82,947 and the 241, you end up with the magic number of 228. Let me just say that if you want the county to have this agreement with TNP, we can do that as well. The way that we were talking about it at the intergovernmental meeting was the city running the project and, and taking care of it that way, and y'all paying the city the portion that we pay TNP. So, if you wanna flip it around and have an interlocal agreement to where y'all are running the project, and we write you a check for the 82,947, we can do that. I just need to know what y'all want. I put together an interlocal agreement with the help of the city attorney, and gave it to the judge yesterday, but I was planning on this discussion taking place at your next meeting, not this meeting, so hats off to y'all for talking about it now, and, and so I'm here to, to facilitate, however y'all wanna do it. We're excited about the potential of partnering with the county to do anything, so that's where we're at, and be happy to answer any questions that you may have, or take some direction that you may have for me.
Well, I guess, Mr. Lenny, don't you, I kinda like the idea of the city taking the lead, don't, don't you, and us paying our share to the city, I like the 60-40 split. We gotta take this in increments here.
Yes, sir.
Do that.
We do, too. We don't, we don't have unlimited money tree growing down at City Hall, you know, we're, we're struggling, just like everybody else, to pay our bills, so.
Right.
But this is growth, like I said at the last meeting, growth is on us, whether it's at the school district, the county, or the city, we've got, we've got growth coming, our low taxes are attracting more and more people, all-in, you're at $1.60 for your property taxes in the county, for the county school and city, that's, that's very cheap compared to our neighboring communities, and that's causing developers to look at us. Right now, the city's got about 2,000 residential units planned to be constructed in the next three, four years, so, and then you got your stuff out on, in Crescent that's growing, you've got stuff in Toler that's growing, our county's growing exponentially, you got stuff on Fault Creek Highway, you got stuff on 144, you, you guys are booming out in the county, and listen, what we're talking about here is providing a safe means for people to traverse across our county. We don't want people dying because of our substandard roads and intersections, so I'm applauding y'all for having this on the agenda today, and I'm happy to answer any questions or help you any way I can.
Okay, and Ryan, you have any questions, Mr. Kaufman?
So, I, I would just suggest, if you like what TNP's doing for us, you know, follow through with that today, and then we will come back to the next meeting with the interlocal agreement structured the way you want, if you want it the city or the county, we can put it together. I've got it on my agenda for next Tuesday night, to, to do it the way I just described, where the city's, the reciprocal of the agreement, and our engineers are working with their engineers and that kind of stuff, but we will do it any way you wanna do it.
Mr. Kaufman.
Y'all take separate action on that.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Mr. Kaufman, have you given a, that draft interlocal agreement to Matt Mills, our county attorney?
No, I handed it to County Judge Administrator yesterday.
Yesterday?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So.
Just got it, just got it put together Saturday while I was working, so.
Okay, 'cause I, I had been, I had asked Matt to draw up an interlocal agreement after, as I mentioned, we weren't, we weren't.
I'll give him a copy of it.
Yeah, yes, he's here.
Yeah, I'll give him a copy.
As we weren't, as we weren't part of the original agreement, I said, "Well, we, we need an interlocal agreement," and so he, he quickly drew one up.
Okay.
I didn't know where today was going, so I didn't put it on the agenda, but.
But next, next meeting's great, and we just need to know what y'all wanna do, and let's do it. I'm excited, you know, we had our, we've had almost a year of meetings talking about this, so I'm, I'm excited to get to this point, so we're, we're happy to facilitate whatever we can do. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, I think, I think, you know, we could make a decision today about this TNP till right now. Y'all already passed it at our interlocal government, the city did, didn't you?
We, they gave, they approved us executing that agreement with TNP.
Yeah.
The, the funding side with the county has yet to be administratively complete.
Yeah, but y'all, yeah, y'all approve this, that's.
Right, and so we're ready to do whatever y'all wanna do, so.
So, what we would be voting on is to create a contract for one of these three options, and then bring it back and execute it at our next meeting, so I understand?
For an interlocal agreement, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I'm looking at, is I need, I, for the city's sake, is I need an interlocal agreement executed, it needs to be on the agenda, posted, and that's why I brought it to the judge yesterday, so that you could have it at the next meeting, and that's, last Friday, I discovered this was on the agenda for today, so that's why I, I put this together, and then I'll give it to Matt, and y'all figure out what you wanna do, but ideally, I hope you take action today to engage TNP, or at least let them know we're moving forward to work together, and, and then our next meeting, we, we solve it, so.
So, all three of the options include the first part, which is what you had, so.
But I, I do wanna recognize that $13,700 that we've already spent, and we've kind of, you know, gentlemen, agreement, we're gonna share that, whatever the percentage was when the study came out, so I've added that to this interlocal agreement.
Yeah, that was very important, what they did, the initial work that TNP did for us, it was very helpful.
Very eye-opening.
To get us to where we are right now.
Very eye-opening, for sure.
Traffic and everything, so.
And I'm sure we've got other areas we need to address as well, and I'm looking forward to continue to work with you, right?
Hey, Chris, before you go, so just to make sure we're clear, the agreement that you guys voted on at the city council is just for the planning part of it, it does not. It does not include the specifications, estimates, is that correct, sir?
Correct.
And, which is what we've added to with, for today, I've added that to this agenda to actually, and I'm not, I'm not clear which op, option one is what's already been done with the city, correct?
Yes.
And we wanted to move it to the next level, and option three would be to look at plans, specifications and estimates to get started. Am I correct?
Do I need to come up to the mic?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir. It would, it would, what that would do would be to modify the current proposal, the contract proposal we have in front of you, to include a task that would then be auth, a task for PSNE that would be authorized after we completed the initial planning, planning study.
And this is just to ask you to give us a proposal and outline all the things that we're going to be doing, and give it, and it's going to be a proposal.
Right. It would not be a comprehensive scope and fee at this, at this time. The reason for that is because we don't know exactly what the improvements need to be yet. And so it would, it would be including a task that would be authorized. Once that task is authorized, we would then need to provide you a comprehensive scope and fee proposal at that time.
So how, what would, what would a motion sound like to get there?
I'll take a shot at it, if you don't mind, Commissioner Eagle.
Sure.
Okay.
But before you make a motion, we have another speaker.
We have another speaker, okay.
Yes. Maury Ree.
I'll pass.
You'll pass? Okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
So I'll make the motion that we engage TNP to provide a contract that includes a detailed study, which was presented at the interlocal meeting, intergovernmental meeting, which will include the breakdown of the terms and conditions between the city and the county, and payment of such, with an additional project scope that will commit to, now I have to read my notes, the intent to commit to start the phase, the PSNE phase. Is that correct? Does that make it, does that make it clear to you, Commissioner Eagle? If not, we can-
No, no, not really.
Okay, I'll, I'll withdraw it, and we can attempt it again.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you tell us what you would like, so it's clear in your mind what your task is going to be, what you're asking us to prove? Just start with this. To ask us to pass what?
I believe what needs to be passed is approval for, for TNP to modify our current contract to include a task, an additional service task to be authorized at a later date for PSNE. In terms of the, the interlocal agreement, I believe that, that will be a separate agreement between the county and the city.
That's not a part of this.
So this, that will not be a part of our contract, TNP's contract proposal. But what we, what we need is for, you know, basically consensus and agreement that we can modify our current contract to include an additional service task to be authorized at a later date for the plan, specs and estimate.
And the contract is with the county? Are you talking about the contract that you have with the city?
That's, that's for, I think, the county and the city to decide who wants to take the lead on it.
Well, if, if you're going to modify a, a contract that we're going to vote on, it needs to be a contract with the county.
Okay. Then yes, it would be a contract with the county.
Are you clear?
Is everybody confused? Okay.
Well, that's why, I, I think what we need is a, an interlocal agreement that includes the city and the county with your, both phases. Phase one, which is the $228,000, including the $13,000, and, and a step that says that we're going to commit to continue.
Right. So, yeah, we got the cart before the horse.
Yes.
We don't need a motion for a contract, we need a motion for an interlocal agreement with the city to do the cost share, not only for the 200 and-
28 and the 13.
28, but also with a secondary article within the contract to do the PSNE detailed design for the construction documents, the bidding documents.
Can those be two separate instruments? I mean, to, today, if we approve, in theory, what's, what's on the table from the interlocal or the intergovernmental meeting there, and then come back with an addendum that, that we can, we and the city can get together and hammer out the details in the interlocal. So we can get started today by approving the first portion contingent on an interlocal agreement that, that works with the county and city, and then address the addendum at, at a future debate in the next quarter or something.
It goes back to the partnership with the city.
Yeah.
You got to get the partnership of the city motion passed for the 60-40 split that we were talking about, right? And then, once that's decided, both City Council and, I guess, City Council would, would then vote on a contract, okay? I think what the motion here before you today has got two elements. Chris, would you agree? Get up here. Is it okay if he joins in?
Sure.
Because, like I said, this is, this is confusing. I think, I think there's a need for actually two motions.
Mm-hmm.
One, one is the interlocal agreement to support, that was on the table mid, at the end of January.
To revise it, because we don't, it needs to be revised to have terms and conditions. We don't have an interlocal agreement at this point.
Here's something to think about. What, what Commissioner Eagle is asking for is beyond the city limits. So that needs to be 100% county. So what we're asking today, I think, what I would like to see is what we're going to do with what's shared on the 60-40 contract of the $228,000 plus the reimbursement for the $13,700, interlocal agreement's in the judge's hand at this point. I'm not saying to point, approve that today, but conceptually, say that's what we're headed towards, and then we'll, we'll ratify it at our next meeting through the process. So this, adding the PSNE for beyond Granbury needs to be, I don't mind you putting it in this agreement that we're talking about today, but it needs to be an understanding between us and you that the county's going to pay for that portion. We're, we're splitting the 60-40 portion inside the corporate city limits of Granbury.
Which is through Temple Hall Highway, which is-
Well, it goes to industrial, the total footprint of the city is industrial.
City limits past Temple Hall.
But, yeah, Temple Hall, 167.
Yeah, but this is only through Temple Hall. This is through, the 228's through Temple Hall.
I think-
No, it's through industrial.
I think it goes all the way to industrial.
Does it go through, all the way through it?
The planning study goes through industrial.
60-40 would be all the way to industrial, correct?
Right.
That's what I, you know, that's what I remember from, you know, the interlocal, you know, the 60-40 split.
Yeah.
You know, is, you know, for the study all the way through to industrial.
Correct. 228, though, I understand that.
Yes.
But is that the 228?
Plus the 13.
All the way?
Industrial to 377 in Granbury, yes.
Okay.
That's the 228 study that we, we talked about at the last intergovernmental meeting.
Right.
Well, let's just get Mr. Mills up there. He's the county attorney up here, let's let him go ahead and make-
Before, before I shut up, I would like to say, if you take action, I'm not telling you how to vote, folks, I'm just saying, if you take action, from my perspective as a city, what we need from you is direction for my next meeting, next Tuesday night, to, to approve an interlocal agreement that I can bring back to you then. I just need verbal communication on it. You don't need to take any action on it, but do you want this 228 contract within the city limits, and you want to add the PSNE? That's fine with us, but, but at some point, there's going to be another vote in the future to determine the funding scenario and how much that additional scope's going to cost. So it really doesn't impact us either way, but I just want to make sure that it's clear what we're got today is an agreement drafted and put before you to the city. If you want to change it tonight, or today, to the county, and then come back and do an interlocal agreement and switch it again, we can do that, whatever you want to do. Thank you. Okay.
Well, I don't know, what's the question?
What's the question?
Well, we don't have a contract to approve or sign at this point, so the, I think we're questioning, is the motion just to commit to have a contract, or do we even need to?
Well, I mean, as I understand it, the, if the city sort of takes the lead as the contract person with the company, then we would just have an interlocal to pay our 60 share to the city, right? So we just approve the interlocal to, to fund back 60% to the city, and then they have the contract in place, right?
Well, there's two things. We need, we need that contract drafted so that we can look at it and sign it, which we can't do today. And then we need to add, a TNP is going to add scope to it first also. First, they're going to add scope to their contract with the city to include the next phase, which is just to continue the next phase with no estimates. Right? Okay.
Well, but I was thinking that we could, we'd do that at, in the future with an addendum on our portion, is that not?
Because there's already-
Like, we didn't need to do that today, right?
I mean, there already is a contract, right, between the city and TNP.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, we've all seen that, right? So, I mean, can't we just approve a 60% interlocal to refund the city their share, and then they sign it knowing that they are getting refunded 60%?
Not on the agenda.
Right, it's not on the agenda, so.
Not on the agenda like that.
We could ask you to draft one and bring it back to the next meeting.
Oh.
So here, so this is, here's my thinking. I think we should table this till the next Commissioners Court. I'm going to make a motion to table this to the next meeting, get all this cleared up so we can come in here and not speculate. You know, the interlocal agreement is not on this agenda, but we need to get everything straightened up so we can just come in here and get it voted in and do it, is my opinion. So that's my motion, to table it till the next court.
Second.
Okay, one second here. Do you need something from us so that you could go back here? We're getting a cart and a horse mixed up up here. Conceptually, conceptually with that, the 60-40 split, taking into account the $13,754.
So what, what, what I would hope that you would resolve verbally today is direction for me and City Attorney, or County Attorney Mills, to understand what you want that interlocal agreement to say. Do you want the city providing the leadership, or you want the county providing the leadership administration over the contract? We need to know that, so the interlocal agreement will be worded appropriately that way. And based on that decision, then we can draft the agreement that TNP's going to give respectively. That's all we need. And then the next meeting, we'll finish it up.
Okay, that, and I appreciate that, but we, my, okay, my issue is it's not on our agenda like that. It is not on our agenda that way. If, you know, it's, the interlocal agreement is not on the agenda.
No, I don't need an interlocal agreement. I just need to know what you want it to be on the next agenda. So it's a future agenda item. What would you like for it to say? You're not voting on it, you're just saying what you want, and then we'll bring it back, and then you can deliberate and discuss it.
Well, the agenda item is to discuss and take appropriate action to allow TNP to revise scope and fee proposal for Old Granbury Road.
Okay, who do you want that made out to? The city or the county? Based on how you do that action, is the way we will draft an interlocal agreement. Simple as that.
But I think the city should, should be, but we're not voting on it, but I think at the next meeting that we would, I'm going to sponsor something, that we would let the city take the leadership in working with TNP on Old Granbury Road. Is that what you need for the next meeting?
That's what I've given you yesterday.
Yeah.
I've given you that yesterday, so.
Well, I, I can tell you that I will sponsor that for the next meeting that we do have coming up. And I can also tell you that I think that based upon the percentage of ownership of the 60-40, I think that's has been discussed, and, and asking y'all to share in that, I think that that's fair. And I will ask that also taken into account the $13,754 that the city has already paid for the initial study that was done by TNP. So does that help?
And, and to make matters more clear, I'll have TNP put together an agreement both ways. I'll bring an interlocal agreement both ways, and you can work it out.
That's right, we could have one of them.
All right, so there's some motion in a second to table.
So we'll table it, and will that help you so that you can move forward then?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion made by Commissioner Eagle to table this motion, second by Commissioner Samuelson till the next meeting to work out the contract with TNP and with the interlocal agreement with the city of Granbury. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. We, it's clear as mud, but we're getting there, aren't we? Hey, thank y'all, thank y'all for coming down, I appreciate it, really do.
Our pleasure.
Okay. Okay. Okay, let me just tell anybody here, if you've got up here, we are pulling from the agenda, it's a long agenda today, we're pulling items number three and number 16. So if you signed up to speak on either item number three or item number 16, those items have been pulled by the respective sponsors, and so we're not going to hear those at this Commissioners Court. So the first item now is back to item number one, discuss and take appropriate action for consideration to waive the 2024 payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot for the Granbury Housing Authority. I put this on here, it's been done every year since I've been in office, is we're, we waive the payment in lieu of taxes for Granbury Housing Authority. So I make that motion that we do waive the payment in lieu of taxes for the Granbury Housing Authority. They're here, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay. The next item, item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the use of the gazebo for the annual Bible reading marathon beginning Friday, April 26, 2024, through Thursday, May 1, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. each day. We do have one speaker that was on here.
Passed.
He passes on that, so.
I'll make the motion.
Good.
As stated.
Second. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Eagle, that we allow the use of the gazebo for the annual Bible reading. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion?
We do.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Item three was pulled. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the city of Granbury's event application, approving the request for use of the historical courthouse parking lot not to include the east side of the courthouse for, quote, lunch in black, celebrating the 2024 total eclipse on Monday, April the 8th, 2024, from 12:00 noon to 2:00 p.m. Setup begins Sunday, April the 7th, 2024, at 10:00 p.m., and takedown will be Monday, April the 8th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. And we do have an illustrious speaker on that, which is Debbie Gordon. Ms. Gordon.
Good morning. I'm going to pass out our site map-
Okay.
...so that you can see how this will flow.
We're going to have people from all over the state coming up here, aren't we? And more, maybe from out of state, too.
Thank you.
So we have made the, the entry off of Houston and going around the courthouse on the portion of the parking lot that will not be used by the lunch, and will be available for parking for the staff of the county, and also for any of those that come in early for the lunch in black. It is going to be a ticketed event. We are allowing 400 attendees, and we will be providing comp tickets to our city officials and county officials. and county officials. So it's going to be a wonderful time. We're going to have tables on the Pearl's and Houston side of the courthouse parking lot. There will be long tables and the best view for the total eclipse on that Monday will be from that area. So folks will get the best view of it. We will have safety glasses for our attendees as well that will be provided by Visit Granbury and also by the Historic Granbury Merchants Association.
Good. All right. We have no speakers on this item up here. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize the county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application approving the request for the use of the historical courthouse parking lot not to include the east side of the courthouse for lunch in black, celebrating the 2024 total eclipse on Monday, April 8, 2024, from 12:00 noon to 2:00 p.m. Setup begins Sunday, April 7, 2024, at 10:00 p.m. And takedown will be Monday, April 8, 2024, at 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to allow the county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application approving the request of the historic courthouse parking lot in accordance with the schedule that was given to us by Ms. Gordon and with accordance with the times has been stated. Any further discussion? All those in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Carries unanimously. We'll see you at the total eclipse.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
We won't see you because it'll be dark.
Well, you never know. I might wear something that will glow.
That's right.
All right. Okay. Item number five. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the direct deposit received from emergency management's assistant, Compact, EMAC, in the amount of $5,183.93 and other possible funding sources to place into dispatch overtime. Sheriff.
This was placed on the agenda two weeks ago and brought it back to talk about getting it certified by the auditor and possibly having another funding source to, because we're going to need more than just that amount of money. Sorry about my voice. It's allergies, I guess.
So the last time this was on the agenda, there was a discussion about the need to shore up the dispatch overtime. I asked the dispatch supervisor, Sean McGuire, to forecast his overtime budget so that we could shore it up instead of just making a plug to his budget. And as I've discussed with Ms. Matlock, our county auditor, she came up with a forecast based on the current run rate and discussions with Mr. McGuire regarding training and new hires, because when you have, when you have new hires, you really have two people working the shift, which is doubling the cost of the shift, correct? So I also spoke with the sheriff and about a whole approach rather than a Band-Aid approach on the overtime budget for dispatch. And he mentioned there may be some room in his salary budget because they have been down some staff during the year. So based on the current run rate, there should be about 35,000 available in dispatch salary. However, we would probably need to not, just to be safe, not take that, all of that to shore up the dispatch budget. So here's what I've thought about and if, you know, we have discussion in the motion, maybe something similar to that, but that we use the 5.183 that's currently placed in miscellaneous revenue, correct? That was the refund, and move that to the dispatch overtime. Move $10,000 from dispatch salaries and the remaining, and a remaining $4,816 to come from general fund contingency. And that would put the dispatch overtime budget at 40,000 for the year, which is about the same as it was last year, right? So that's what I've been talking to Ms. Matlock about and the sheriff about. So this, the putting $5,000 in the overtime budget is just going to probably get you current. It's not even going to take you through the rest of the month.
Okay. So it's, the motion is to take the $5,183.93 plus an additional $10,000 and then an additional $4,800, increasing the total budget into the emergency management, I mean, the dispatch-
Dispatch.
Forty thousand dollars, which is what it was last year. Is that correct, Ms. Matlock?
The total year budget for overtime was about 39,000 from last year. This year, it's at 20,000. They've used it. So we're going to put an additional 20 in their overtime, making it a total of 40.
Yes.
So making a total of 40. Okay. All right. So that's the motion, second by, did you second it?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson.
So 10,000 would come from the salaries. Okay. Yep.
Okay. From the salary. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Item number six. Discuss updated plans for the purchase of fire and EMS apparatus. Yes, sir. Mr. Jeff Young.
Judge, Commissioners. So there's been a little bit of change based on some recommendations from Mr. Sabonis on the way we were looking at purchasing some of these vehicles. Apparently, we cannot borrow money and then donate it. So instead of putting 350,000 towards two Texas EMS to go towards an ambulance, I would like to propose that we just buy the ambulance, let them use it. The other part of that is the 334,000 that Granbury had asked to be reimbursed for the tanker truck. We can't donate funds in that manner as well. So they have requested a replacement for two vehicles. It would be a quick attack truck and a command vehicle. That would equal the same amount of what we were looking at reimbursing them for on the tankers.
Yeah. And what was going on there is they needed to keep that truck, keep the title to that truck to use as collateral, and then they were going to use that to get loaned on this vehicle. So it's, it's just restructured there in a way that's allowed under the borrowing, the lending rules.
Correct. So. The amount, the amounts didn't change, and I have the actual firm quoted prices on all of this stuff. It comes to $7,553,757.07 based on the quotes that I'd sent out.
As opposed to $7,600,000.
Correct.
Okay.
What was that number again, please?
Now, one thing I would like to point out, and that, that does take into consideration the purchase of radios. And I think I'd said that I'm going to hold off on ordering radios until the trucks are getting close to delivered, but I didn't want to overlook that and forget that to make sure that that was considered.
And I know this is a long way off and because it'll probably take two years to get the trucks, but once we get the trucks, what happens to the current trucks?
Most of the tankers, we can either donate to the departments to sell, we can use them as trade-ins. Five of the pumper tankers that we're looking at are going to be replacing the older trucks that I cannot get refurbished. One of those will probably be moved to a second station, the one that's in the best maintenance. The five tankers are additions because they don't have tankers. Those aren't replacements.
Okay.
The two trucks that we're looking at for Granbury, it's my understanding, those would be replacements of current vehicles.
Okay.
But if I remember correctly, in previous court, the agreement, if we give, if we, if we, the county, donate those pumper tankers to current fire departments, they cannot come back to the county wanting us to subsidize and pay for, you know, the refurb of those.
Correct.
Okay. And that make that, you know, that still has to stand.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sabonis, I see that you're sitting up here. Can you come up here and address this and clear this up and tell us that the way that we had initially did it on the tax note of the $7,600,000 is not possible and that it has to be restructured? And is this restructuring where we can buy the vehicles as described by Fire Marshal Jeff Young? Will that pass legal muster? And Mr. Mills, maybe you need to come up here so that you can add to this as well.
Well, Judge and Commissioners, citizen of Hood County, Jim Sabonis with Hilltop Securities, financial advisor.
Can you move the microphone closer, please?
I'm actually joined by Rudy Segura of McCall Parkers, the county's bond counsel. We've worked extensively discussing this issue with him, and he's given us the direction of both the legal way to structure this and the tax exempt way to structure. So I'm, I'm going to let, instead of following up on what he says, let him address this exactly.
Okay.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Rudy Segura. I'm with McCall Parkers and Horton Law Firm. We're a municipal bond firm. We're 105 years old, based in Dallas, Texas, and we have the, had the privilege of representing Hood County and roughly 40% of all governmental entities in Texas for a very long time. The tax note that was presented to us is sort of unique. We represent a lot of counties around Texas. And, you know, when we first heard fire truck, that kind of, you know, I started scrambling. You know, why don't we done fire trucks? And obviously Hood County is unique in the way that you have, you don't have ESDs and you don't have your own fire department. You just have a bunch of volunteer fire departments. And there is clear authority under Chapter 352 of the Local Government Code to furnish fire protection and firefighting equipments to residents of the county. You can do that. If you want to finance it as a general matter, that, you know, any debt that the county issues has to be approved by the Attorney General's Office. Generally, you have to own it if you're going to finance it. The county has to own it. The county has to take title to it. That's one. The other thing is to finance it on the lowest possible cost. You want the loan to be tax exempt. And so there's actually a super duper special provision of the Internal Revenue Code that deals with governmental entities providing funds to volunteer fire departments, specifically volunteer fire departments, and it requires different procedures, which is the next agenda item. And then furthermore, under Chapter 774, the county is authorized, the Health and Safety Code talks about hospitals and indigent health. The county is authorized to provide emergency ambulatory care for generally people that can't afford it, otherwise afford it. And so the authority is there, but with all these things, if the county wants to fund it, the county has to own it. And because of the way the loan is structured in that you're repaying it very quickly, that you cannot do what's called reimbursement. You cannot, we cannot close in the loan and take that money to pay for costs we already paid that have already been paid out. So it's got to, all payments have to be prospective on expenditures that are incurred after we fund this on March 12. So that, that's unique, the structure, to be able to do this on a tax exempt basis.
But he's already structured it. He's already made the changes to take into account what Jeff said. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. It's already structured everything, you know, we discussed, we talked about other options, right? You could buy the tanker from Granbury, but again, they have to keep it in their name. And that's, that's another issue for other cities. Same thing where they're, the cities are trying to participate in funding, giving funds to volunteer fire departments to buy this equipment, you know, but the volunteer fire departments are saying, buy this truck for us, but put it in our name. And just from a financing perspective, state law perspective, that, you know, the county has to assure, has to be assured it's going to get the benefit of those tankers for its citizens. It has to maintain ownership at least through the bonds or some sort of, through the life of the debt, or at least some sort of ironclad agreement that the county exercises total control over that piece of equipment.
Well, we have to buy it. We have to buy it outright through the tax note financing is what you're saying. But we can then give it to the EMS knowing that they're going to do it or not? Because EMS is a 501(c)(3) that we don't have any control over. So if we, we can't, we have to buy it is what you say outright. We're going to let them use it? Is that what we're going to do? Not give it to them?
Correct. Yeah.
County asset, then.
It's a county asset.
Dislike the other trucks.
And then the same thing with the two vehicles that we're buying for the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department. We're going to buy the two vehicles and let them use it. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And that conforms to everything. So that's the basis. Does that take care of both?
And we still have to have the public hearing.
Six and seven then? No, six. I guess it's just six, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's not an action item, so.
You said, well, it definitely takes care of six on the thing. So do I hear a motion about number six?
I don't think it's an action item, so it's just.
It's not an action item.
Oh, it's just, oh, it's just, oh, so it's seven. Conduct a public hearing. So the notice has been out for the required period of time, so at this time, at 10:29, we're going to adjourn into a public hearing for multiple, conduct a hearing for multiple volunteer fire departments located within Hood County and Texas EMS as required by the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act and the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, which is about a million pages long. Go ahead. I guess you can break that down for us, sir.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor and Commissioners. So TEFRA, a TEFRA hearing is required anytime the county is sort of loaning its tax exempt borrowing power to another entity, in this case, to the volunteer fire departments and it's, and Texas EMS. You're sort of lending your ability to issue bonds on a tax exempt basis for state and governmental purposes, local governmental purposes. So anytime we do that, you got to do a TEFRA hearing. And so ever since COVID, all TEFRA hearings are via teleconference. So I believe we're dialed in on the, on the phone. Yep. So there's no minimum, maximum time limit. Just got to give people time to speak if they want to speak on the matter, and then we can close the hearing and take action to consider approving, giving TEFRA approval.
Okay. I think we do have one, Mark Lowry, is that the item that you wish to discuss?
Judge, Commissioners, Madam Commissioner, Mark Lowry. Lived in Hood County for 10 years. I selected this one because I saw the IRS, the Internal Revenue Code on here. There's a lot of items on here that's important. A comment on the last one, you're going to give this to them under your name. What about liability insurance? Because you're going to have people driving that vehicle and it's owned by you, but they're going to be driving your vehicle. So insurance and liability needs to be concerned. Commissioner Andrews is focused on these fire departments. As a law, I think you all understand that I think we need to look to the future and continue to do research. Do we need a full-time fire department? I think the volunteer fire department is excellent. I'm 100% behind the firefighters. I'm 100% by EMS. Hood County residents, please start paying attention. The hospital district, we heard that the EMS is going, it's a nonprofit, but it's losing revenue. We've got to have a solution for EMS or we won't have it in this county. The fire department, we've got to figure out a way to manage the fire department. Hood County residents, pay attention. We, last night, $161.5 million for a school bond. I'm not going to argue the merits of that bond. What I am going to say, it's either going to extend our debt or it's going to cost us tax dollars. We're talking about expansion of Old Granbury. We're talking about a potential jail. I mentioned the EMS. All of this takes revenue. Hood County residents, come to these meetings. Go to the hospital district meetings. Go to the school boards, because they're going to come after with taxes. People ask me, why am I interested? My taxes are frozen because I'm old. Well, I'm not that selfish, ladies and gentlemen. We've got a lot of young people that's coming to this community, a lot of people that live in this community. It's going to impact their lives, and if we keep coming at them. The hospital district's talking about an indigent tax. We've talked about bonds. We've talked about revenue coming into this county for certain items, and we saw what happened last night. So please pay attention. And I just ask, I think you all know where I stand. I'm a fiscal conservative. We've got to come together and figure out how we can improve our community without taxing our community to the limit. I thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration on keeping our taxes low and our support services as high as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody, does anybody else wish to make a statement? Anyone else has signed up? If not, any Commissioner wish to make anything before we go out?
Well, I will, I will address this. We currently have county-owned equipment that's in each fire department, used by those fire departments, and the county does. fire departments, and the county does insure that, the liability on that. We carry the insurance for those trucks, so.
With that, it's now 10:33, and we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. And we're at item number eight. Adopted resolution approving the financing by Hood County of fire trucks and firefighting equipment for use by volunteer fire departments and an ambulance for use by Texas EMS as required by TEFRA and the code. Yes, sir.
Hello again, Commissioners and Judge. Now that the hearing has been conducted, there is a resolution before you for approval complies with TEFRA. TEFRA requires either, you know, requires approval from this governing body, so.
Okay. Does anybody wish to, any further discussion, or does somebody wish to make a motion?
Well, Drew's getting the resolution up on the screen if, for the public. It's quite long.
Yeah, in summary, you know, we're citing that we're thinking about issuing some bonds. We have authority to issue for fire trucks. We have authority to issue for ambulances. We have contracts with each of these fire departments and with Texas EMS. And then the code requires us to go through this process and just says that, you know, we're proposing to, the county's proposing to issue up to, because we didn't know at the time, we posted the agenda, up to 7.6 million in these tax notes. It says we've had the hearing, we've otherwise complied with TEFRA. And then the action is to approve the TEFRA notice that went out and give approval of, give TEFRA approval to the project.
Okay. I'd like for you to come up here and look at this document here and ask you if this what you have approved and what we need to vote on. That's it? And so these addendum to this page here, we're, we're going to have to make a record vote of it as to how many Commissioners, I think.
Is that the county clerk?
Lady around here, you digest that little old tax code like that. That's what you read every night before you go to bed. Couple pages.
Only one on that.
Okay. Okay. So I guess, wow, okay. So here's the deal. So does anybody wish, well, I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution.
We have speakers.
I'm sorry?
We have speakers.
We do, on eight?
Three of them.
Oh, Chris Kaufman, you're number one. Are you here?
I did sign up to speak, and I, you know, before Commissioner Andrews made his comments, I wanted to say y'all are already in a relationship with the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department, which is a 501(c)(3), and y'all have equipment there that y'all own and maintain through the city through agreement. So that's set, that just looks like a continuation of what you're already doing. But I learned also today by being here that you're, you're buying two pieces of equipment for the fire department totaling about $335,000. So that was my question. Is there a fire station being built out of this as well, or EMS station? What's going on with construction of facilities that have been discussed through the newspaper? Is that part of this bond?
No, 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 no. That's not in the bond. That was ARPA funds that were granted to Texas EMS and.
Gotcha. All right, that's all I've got. I needed to clear that up in my head so I'd know what to tell my folks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker on this is David Ferris.
I'm not all ready to answer.
All right. The next speaker is Tina Brown.
I just want clarification that this resolution won't affect tax rate, but will increase the debt. Is that true?
Yes. It will not increase the, do you want to, do you want to show that other presentation, Mr. Sabonis, that you provided?
The short answer to your question is yes. That is, the debt service rate will remain unaffected. It will increase debt on the county.
But you didn't seem to understand that when the school bond was put out last year.
That's not, this is about the counties.
I'm just making sure that y'all understand, and you tell the people, that this is, this won't affect the tax rate, but will increase the debt, which is something that most, most of this court was against for the school bond. I just want to make that clarification. Is that right? You're going to vote on extending debt, but it won't increase the tax rate. So y'all understand tax rate. So y'all understand the tax rate. When you don't increase it, you don't increase the tax rate. I'm just making sure everybody on this court understands it, because you didn't seem to understand it at the last school bond and the upcoming school bond. I'm just making sure you understand.
I think you're mixing apples and oranges, but.
No, ma'am. I'm not. Tax rate is tax rate. Those are words. They mean something.
Yes, I understand it now. I understood it then.
Yep. No, it's a little different. County financing and school financing are not exactly the same.
But tax rate and increased debt are the same, whether we're talking city, county, or school. Right?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any discussion, or do I hear a motion?
Oh, I think you made the motion.
You made the motion, and I'll second it.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner, County Judge Massengill assigned the resolution approving the financing by Hood County of the fire trucks and firefighting equipment for use by the volunteer fire departments and an ambulance for use by Texas EMS, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. This brings us to item number nine. Discuss and consider adoption of an order authorizing the issuance and sale of the Hood County Texas Tax Note Series 2024 and the maximum principal amount of $7,600,000 for the purpose of acquiring and equipping emergency vehicles, levying an annual ad valorem tax, and providing for the security for and payment of said note, and enacting other provisions related thereto. Mr. Sabonis.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. On January 9th, I presented a proposed plan of finance to fund the purchase of the fire equipment. Yesterday, on behalf of the county, our firm took bids for the project. In summary, the goal is to fund $7,483,000 of project funds by issuing $7,556,000 of a tax note, which will have an amortization of three years. We received 10 bids from eight financial institutions. The low interest rate was a 4.4% fixed rate bid provided by Webster Bank. And that bid, in summary, was within $5,000 of total principal and interest of what we indicated on January 9th. The total principal and interest will be $7,928,000, and it will be amortized over three years. And based on no growth in value, just our current tax assessed value, there'll be no impact on our current INS tax rate of 2.547 cents. The bids ranged from 4.4% to 7.5%, and it was outstanding result. We received many bids from some local financial institutions and national institutions. Eight bidders, 10 bids is a really good result, which is what we expected. You're a double A-plus, very highly rated entity, and it's been very successful. So as your financial advisor, this is exactly what we proposed in spite of a market, an intermarket that's going against us. It's, and we would believe that the process was both efficient and broadly accepted by investor community, very competitive process. You have before you the order that has been updated to include the statistics for the low bidder from Webster Bank of the 4.4%. If you approve that order, Rudy Segura with McCall Parkers will submit it to the Attorney General for review and approval. And we're targeting a March 12th funding date, which we'd close the transaction and the county would receive funds. At that time, my understanding is that the county would make an initial partial payment for the equipment, and then the remainder would be, would be invested into an interest-bearing account until the expected date of the final payment. We've actually taken that in consideration, so we're expecting that interest earning. We've only funded the amount we need plus what our expected interest earning is to make the same, second payment. So I want to, again, thank Commissioner Sammelson, Commissioner Andrews. They've spent a lot of time working through this process with us. As financial advisor who works with this county and many counties, this is a very efficient and effective way to do this. I'm going to thank Rudy, who guided us on the process. The goal was always to fund the equipment to make sure that the volunteer fire equipment, fire entities had state-of-the-art equipment to fight their fires. And we worked through the process where I believe this process ensures that the citizens of counties control the equipment, but it's used by the volunteer fire departments to positively impact their, their, their region. So we're very pleased with the result, and we're proud to present it to you, and we recommend approval. Answer any other questions you have.
Yeah, I got a question. And we talked about this the last time you were here, and maybe the time before that as well. This is a Texas tax note, correct? And we can go up to seven years. We can do a three-year, five-year, what have you, correct?
Correct.
This is not a bond.
Correct.
And one of the things about this Texas tax note is because the county has virtually paid off all of its debt, every penny of it, except for the Crescent Bypass, which we're paying a fixed no-interest loan. We got a couple of years left on that, correct? So we have no debt. So when we, but it's recommended in good accounting principles that we carry some debt. So this is a tax note that we are going to carry some debt for three years, three years, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it will be paid off, and you know what? We're going to have to find something else to keep a deadline in our INS. So it's completely different, absolutely apples and oranges from a school bond. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, without going into detail, that's what I was trying to explain a few minutes earlier. Thank you, Commissioner Eagle.
Okay, we have one speaker, two speakers here. We have Elizabeth Mercer and David Ferris. But Ms. Mercer, you're first.
I'm sorry. I wanted to speak on the development issue.
I can't hear you, ma'am.
I think she wrote the wrong, wrote the wrong number down. Did you want 10 on the, the last?
I wanted to, I have questions about the changes in the development, sir. That would be definitely wrong. Item, I wasn't speaking on this.
She's on Clint's thing.
Right, because you pulled item three. So what I wanted to speak on was I had questions on the changes in the development.
Oh, you want to speak on development then?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Roman numeral nine.
Roman numeral nine.
Under development. All right, you're welcome. Okay. Mr. Ferris, did you want to speak on this?
Sure. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the seven and a half million. And based on other comments, it's, this is something that you've obviously gone through. It's very easy to understand the price of new trucks, fire trucks, of tanker trucks, the difference in the price, and the attempt to try and refurbish the existing ones, and that's not possible. There's a whole lot of issues there that, there has been a whole lot of discussion in here outlining what every expenditure is for. And it had previously been mentioned about the debt load and the need to have some as a county with everything being paid off to balance your sheet out. Now, if you're coming back with the next line item, or next one, with a $100 million bond to build a Taj Mahal to put them in, I'll be up here strongly advocating against it. There's a big difference of buying with no idea of what you're actually buying in $100 million and really questioning whether it's needed. This has been justified, in my opinion, and I fully agree with it.
All right. So we've already, do we need a motion? We've already adopted the order, haven't we?
Have to adopt the resolution.
Yes, Your Honor, this, this is to adopt the order that actually issues the note and levies the tax for to pay the note.
Okay. Is there something else for me to sign? I don't see anything in.
I have it all right here. Carpal tunnel syndrome. And for whenever y'all finishes meeting.
Okay. Well, then, all right, after we finish the meeting, then we'll go ahead and I'll sign it for you, okay?
Thank you.
But you're only charging us, you're tax lawyers from Dallas, so you're only about $2,500 an hour, so we'll get to you as soon as possible.
I'm a flat fee guy, so never, never pay me by the hour.
You're my, you're my hero then, okay? Okay, thank you very much.
He didn't tell you what the flat fee was.
All right, at 10 minutes to 10, we're going to take a brief recess until 11 o'clock before we get into item number 10, which is the Bitcoin deal.
Hang on, we still need to finish up this one. We haven't adopted the.
He's got to adopt the resolution.
Yeah.
We did the resolution, we've got to do the adoption.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would.
All right, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance and sale of Hood County Texas Tax Note Series 2024 and the maximum principal amount of $7,600,000 for the purpose of acquiring and equipping emergency vehicles, levying an annual ad valorem tax, and providing for the security for and payment of said note, enacting other provisions related thereto.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews, as he stated, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. At this time, we're taking a break until 11 o'clock. Okay. At three minutes after 11, we're back on the record as convening into Commissioners' Court, and we're on item number 10, which is discuss Marathon Digital Cryptocurrency Data Center at Wolf Hollow. This is a discussion item to hear from both residents and Marathon Digital Recording regarding the noise and mitigation steps. This discussion will also include a follow-up from the documents that were required by the Commissioners' Court in November of 2021. So at this time, well, I guess we want to hear from, we've got two Commissioners spots. We only need one. Y'all do know that. Y'all just, okay?
That's a constable.
Oh, that's a constable.
Oh, is it Cosmo?
So Judge, I put this on the agenda after the town hall meeting that I had back on January 29th. I wanted to give the public the opportunity to address the entire court on the issues that we're facing out by the Bitcoin data center. Before we begin, I wanted to give some background that may answer some of the questions that came up at the town hall. So on November 9th, 2021, there was a site development plan presented to Commissioners' Court for Wolf Hollow Phase Zero. There was about a 45-minute discussion on this plan, which I have some excerpts from, and would just read a few, but the, the general discussion was about how leasing property that was under a tax abatement for the Wolf Hollow Power Plant would be impacted by, by this lease. There was a lot of discussion about, from the prior county, Assistant County Attorney, the language does not intend. the prior county, Assistant County Attorney, the language does not intend, from my reading anyway, to allow assignment of tax abatement to any of the undeveloped lands separately from the facility. Again, the prior Assistant County Attorney, their definition, as it says, eligible property, and it specifically says the value of the building structures, machinery and equipment and site improvements necessary for the operation and administration of the plant, that means the electric utility plant. There's, feel free to go to that November 9, 2021, Commissioner's Court. It starts at about 56 minutes. But I'll just give you a couple of more comments. The prior Commissioner for Precinct Two, Commissioner Cotton, said that it is our job to look after the abatement that we have done with Wolf Hollow as it is affected by letting a new company come in and use part of that property. Commissioner Eagle says, I think the abatement is the issue. I think that I'm really not inclined to give a contingency until we do more information about, until we get more information about what we're talking about. Then it moves on to the use of power, and Judge Massengill mentions that since we're chatting about it, let's have it in writing that if we have another emergency and we need the electricity that y'all will shut off. And the Compute North representative says, we definitely would do that. I believe, yes, we would do that. So back to, the discussion continues. Commissioner Andrews says, I think it's about the abatement. I think me personally, you know, this is property that's been separated out. You know, a general public use would be allowing something else to come onto the property without changing that abatement is something that I'm objecting to. So additional concerns about the abatement on that space is a concern. Judge Massengill says about Wolf Hollow, it is producing and gotten abatement in part also because it was producing energy. Now, this crypto mining uses energy, am I correct? The Compute North person says, if there is an energy emergency like past February, we will shut down. Again, Judge Massengill says, all right, we need that in writing, Mr. Mills, and, let's say, that in writing, Mr. Mills, that they will shut down if there's an emergency. And Matt Mills, our county attorney, says it can be. And the Judge, Judge Massengill says, that's what we want. We want that for sure. And then back to talking about the abatement, there's a lot of discussion about carving out that property from the current abatement, separate out and do not do the abatement just for that one section would be what I think. That was Matt Mills. So in general, this discussion was about, Andrews says, should we deny it and then go in and see if that portion can be separated out? So a lot of discussion about carving out that section that's being leased to, at that time, Compute North. Then towards the end, County Attorney Matt Mills says, you could have a special meeting in theory in a week, so yes, that's another option. Judge Massengill says, would that give you sufficient time for you and Vanessa to come up with an airtight position? Judge Massengill says, well, it seems to me that a conditional acceptance and then having another meeting gets us out of it because we're just conditionally accepting it, subject to finding what the rights of the county are under the abatement situation. So another, then Matt Mills says, so in other words, just do a conditional approval, then just put it on the next regular agenda. So then there's more talking about carving it out. And then eventually, Commissioner Cotton makes a motion to approve the site development plan for Wolf Hollow Phase Zero Data Center with approval by the county attorney on the effect of that abatement, Wolf Hollow abatement, subject to the company not being included in the Wolf Hollow abatement. So that's the motion that was made, and it was a four-to-one with Commissioner Eagle abstaining due to a procedure. So the court, it was obvious to me, reading that the intent of the court and the motion was to conditionally approve the site plan and carve out the property being leased by Compute North at the Wolf Hollow plant. There was to be follow-up court to put it back on the agenda, but I've looked through courts after that, and it was, there was not another court where it peered back that phase. There were also the letter requested by Judge Massengill. I have not found if that exists. To the best of my research, in the Tax Appraisal District, the county attorney, the county clerk, and the judge's office, there was no subsequent court to discuss resolving the contingencies, nor any change to Wolf Hollow's abatement agreement to carve out the property being leased, nor a letter promising to shut down in high-demand situations. However, in January 26, there was, back on the agenda for phase, they call it, intermittently call it phase one and phase two, but it was phase one. So when my term in office started, I began receiving complaints about the noise that, early last spring. Constable Shirley and I did some research. He purchased a commercial decibel monitor and began taking readings. We met with then owners Generate Capital and U.S. Bitcoins, who were the operator of the plant, I call it a plant, it's really a data center, in May, after the notice letter was sent to the data center manager, onsite manager. On June 1, U.S. Bitcoin representatives attended my town hall and explained that they were building a noise barrier wall, and it would be finished in August or September. Constable Shirley and I continued to monitor the complaints, passed those on to U.S. Bitcoin. I also kept asking about the status of the wall. It was finally largely completed the end of October. However, the complaints escalated and were from different people around different parts of my precinct. Constable Shirley and I took more readings at different locations and passed those on to U.S. Bitcoin, plus I continued to pass on all the complaints and locations of where the people lived, how far they were away from the, the actual data centers to U.S. Bitcoin. They met with us for a field trip, they being U.S. Bitcoin representatives, met Constable Shirley and I for a field trip in early December. After that trip to various locations around Precinct Two, they committed to another sound study and more mitigation measures. Then we got the news that U.S. Genera, that Generate Capital was selling Marathon to Marathon Digital, so everything was on hold. That brings us to January 29, Town Hall, where over 100 people voiced their concerns about how this constant noise is impacting their quality of life, health, and property values. Additionally, Constable Shirley has began issuing citations and will continue to issue those as he records violations. Thank you, Judge. That's the history for everyone. I just wanted everyone to be up to date on where we were. And so that's what I have, if you would want to begin hearing from folks now.
Okay, we have 10 people that have signed up to speak on the Bitcoin. The rules and policies of the Commissioner's Court is that a maximum of 30 minutes is allowed on any agenda item, so each person is going to get three minutes. So are you, Ms. Lang, going to keep record of the time for three minutes? Okay, and our first speaker is Bruce Chase.
Good morning. I'm not sure that I have much to say that's germane to what you're considering. I've lived there. I'm the fourth generation that's lived on this property. I go back to, the last time I spoke here was at, at a similar time when the last power plant went in. We had, one of my neighbors was trying to sell some land. As soon as they were turned onto Wolf Hollow Road, they would do a U-turn and get out when they saw that horrible thing. You can see the visibility of the, of the smoke coming out of those things, and it's headed, we can see it all the time. Now, as far as the current situation there, I live about one mile from it, notably down a hill. But I can hear it inside my house, and I have a handheld decibel meter, and it was clearly over eight in my house a mile from the plant. So we got a problem here. My property value is clearly going down, so tax abatement is not a big deal for me. It's just, we're not planning on selling this. This is family land, but it sure is hard to live there. And I'm hoping you guys can do something about that. Keep us in mind, the little guys in mind on this. We would appreciate that. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. The next speaker is Marcia Kurtz. No, never, I'm sorry, I skipped over. I'm going to say this again. The next time we're filling out these public participation forms, you're going to have to fill out one public participation form per agenda item. Mr. Robert Tabor, you're the next speaker.
You called me out earlier on that. I'm sorry.
No, it, I.
To address my comments in Agenda Item 14, to give these folks more time.
Well, you had 10 also.
Yeah, but I'm going to wave that by and just speak on Agenda Item.
Okay, you want to wave 10? Okay, good. Thank you, sir. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, please.
Okay, so I'm Marcia Kurtz, and I live over in Pecan Plantation. I am, as the crow flies, 3.3 miles from the Wolf Hollow crypto site. And we do hear constant noise at our house, and even at three miles away. If you're out there in the evenings, it's more loud and more prevalent. You will actually get ear, your ears will start to ring after about 20, 30 minutes outside from the frequency of it. I don't think it's the loudness of the sound, because it's a low hum, but the frequency will affect your hearing after about 30 minutes out there. And this is comments from my neighbors who are not here, but I'm representing them with some of these comments. So obviously, when this plant was built, and I spent 40 years working in industries with a lot of plants and manufacturing, due diligence was not done about mitigating noise and how to handle this upfront. But we can't go backwards, we can only go forward. So since I'm giving you a complaint today, I'm going to suggest a couple suggestions, short-term, that maybe can be discussed with the management. And that would be, first of all, maybe they shut down their plant, only operate during the daytime hours and shut down their plant at night so people can actually sleep. Second, they need to find a permanent solution that Marathon's going to pay for to mitigate the noise, if that's possible. I don't know if you can do that, because it's not just the loudness, it's a frequency issue, having worked in automotive and done a lot of work with frequency issues on cars and trucks and stuff like that. The other thing is, there, maybe there's a possibility for them to shut down a certain percent of the units that are running to reduce the noise. And that might be something they can do short-term while they finish their permanent solution. But I would ask the court to prioritize and the effort to make them come to a conclusion and implement it quickly, not five years from now, soon, because I really feel for my neighbors and those who live closer to the plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next speaker is Robert Killian, is that right?
Good morning. My name is Robert Killian. I moved to Hood County in 1995, retired from General Motors in 2000. General Motors is a very noisy place to work, but it's inside, in kilt clothes, in a building. You don't hear it outside, you hear it inside. I've got it ringing in my ears from it. So I wanted peace and quiet. Well, I found it. Osprey, 2125 Osprey Court. Here is a place where, that if you, I heard a noise, it was me making it. Needless to say, several things have since disturbed my peace and quiet. Someone decided to do a Bitcoin place. I don't know anything about Bitcoin. I do know that they make the worst noise that goes on constantly, 24/7. I hope some of you go out and hear it, hear it. It's like a freight train going through your yard. I'm here to say that I am a Texan, born in Cisco, Texas, raised in Kermit, Texas. I just can't believe anyone thinks that they have the right to make this much noise. We've got to do something about this. I don't think that the wall's going to work. They need to put it inside a building. That's the only way this noise is going to be taken care of, just like General Motors. I guess that'll do it.
Thank you. Okay. Ron Roberts.
How y'all doing? I'm Ron Roberts. I live at 9610 Divid in Pecan Plantation. I moved from Wichita Falls, and before that, I lived in Dallas for quite a few years. And I moved down here in my retirement to go to a small community with no traffic, and, and a quiet place. Well, I missed on both of them, it seems like. I live roughly, I'm going to estimate, two and a half to three miles from this plant, Marathon Data Center. I went to a town hall that Annette Samuelson had about six or seven months ago, and listened to the gentleman from the plant come and talk to us about the noise that everybody was there complaining about, including myself, of how they were going to get it fixed. And it was going to be fixed in 45 days or so. I guess three or four months later, they supposedly got it fixed. I can testify to you that today, it's worse than it was then. If I go out in the evening, originally, I could go out in the evening and hear it. Now I can hear it in the daytime and the evening. I drove over to this plant several times. I do not understand how the people that live there can put up with this. It's unbelievable. The decibel rating is supposed to be 0.85, I believe, by law, the maximum. I feel that that, I wish you would address that, because y'all been checking it. I've got to believe it's over 85 decibels. And finding them $500 for each time, they'll just consider this a cost of doing business, and you could find them every day. And I don't think it's going to affect them unless you find them a, a big amount. It's kind of like finding a professional athlete $10,000 when he's making 20 million a year. It has no effect. So if they can, I believe that the only way to handle this is if they cannot get that decibel rating down under 85, that plant needs to be shut down until they can follow the law. And once they can do it, they can open back up. I'm curious to what, to hear from y'all before we get out of this area, of what you feel like we need to do to solve this problem, because if anybody lives out in that area, it is a problem. Not as bad for me, it's irritating, but for people around that plant, it's got to be terrible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Highsmith.
I'm John Highsmith. I live in Pecan Plantation. And I hear this annoying noise in my house. It's about 60 miles from, certain miles and significant outside our home, but we don't hear it inside of our home. So I have been classified, thinking about this as a new experience, but this is better. but a nuisance phenomenon. Then I went to the 15th Town Hall meeting on January 29. And there were several people on the ground of the mining operations speaking about how mining is hurting health. That's really increasing the fear. What does that give? A nuisance that's much more serious. It had migraine effects on sleep, anxiety in children, and more. That's a good point. I also learned from copies on Shirley that this is, these are low-frequency sound waves, and they're known to cause health problems. So in a way, very extreme. And I saw this issue, had not only a nuisance, but really a health assault. I also felt that these are neighbors, really need to do something. So first, I asked the court to view this as not just a nuisance, but as a health assault. I'm gonna change your thinking if I put this in. Now I want to share some information from an article in Bitcoin Magazine. And it's entitled, "Solving Bitcoin Mining Noise Pollution." So just quotes from the article. Mining large noise doesn't always stay contained within the walls of its buildings, or aren't a building here. And mining noise pollution is increasingly popular topic in mainstream news, headlines, and letters to regulators penned by environmental experts. But these outlets often don't understand is that Bitcoin mining noise is a solved problem. Miners have many options available to them for noise control. And some of the things they mentioned, soundproof tiles, changing out the fans, their quiet fans or loud fans, that's which ones are more expensive, acoustic barriers, insulation foam, conversion and dialectic proof, which will absolutely remove all the noise. And second, and I would really like to consider this, I asked the court to ask the county attorney whether this can be considered a public health emergency on an expedient basis. And I cite the provisions. "Whereas pursuant to the Texas Disaster Act of 1975, the county judge may declare a local state of disaster in and for the county, and may exercise the powers granted therein on an appropriate local scale." Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Jim Brown.
I'm Monica Brown, and Jim had to leave. I'm speaking for Shannon Wolfe.
Okay.
Okay, so I also have myself down to speak in just a moment. But Dr. Shannon Wolfe is asking for her thoughts to be shared this morning. She is a Doctor of Psychology and Counseling, Associate Director of All Counseling and Psychology Programs at BH Carroll Theological Seminary, Candidate for Precinct Chair 211. Those are her qualifications. Some of you may remember her. Her son, Alex Wolfram, for City Council. And now she's running for 211. She does work with human trafficking. She is an expert witness for the DOJ, and also for homeland security and a variety of other things related to home, I'm sorry, to trafficking. So here's her statement. "Hood County has a humanitarian crisis on our hands. The people near Wolf Hollow are experiencing a number of documented illnesses, including heart problems, migraines, high blood pressure, hearing loss, anxiety, and the like. Children and the elderly, the most valuable and vulnerable among us, are being adversely affected by the same illnesses. Wildlife are leaving the area. People cannot worship in their local churches on Sunday mornings. Every area of life is impacted by this crisis. All of this is due to the noise from the Bitcoin mine, I'm sorry, Bitcoin mine. Noise is not just something that can be heard, it can also be felt. Sound waves at certain frequencies are palpable. Just yesterday, I saw a metal door violently shake due to the noise from the mine. What must that same noise be doing to the human body? It is not enough for us to empathize with our neighbors in Wolf Hollow. We must not stand by while their lives are being harmed. Government, including local government, is of the people, by the people, for the people." She's quoting Abraham Lincoln. "We, the people of Precinct 211, Hood County respectfully urge you to resolve this crisis. Other states around our nation are removing such mines due to similar health hazards in their communities. We must do the same without delay. Our neighbors are counting on us, and we must not fail them." This is from Dr. Shannon Wolfe. And she is hoping to be elected in Precinct 211. And I believe she was, is the person who will stand up for common decency here as an entire community, city and council, city and county, to work together and not have a "my four and no more" mentality. So those are comments for her. And I don't know if I'm next, or on your list.
You got three.
My turn.
You've got 17 seconds.
Ha, okay. I'm finished. I'm finished.
She's asking who's next on the speaker list.
You've got 50 seconds. Yes, you make the comment.
I'm finished. I spoke for Shannon Wolfe, and I signed up to speak for myself. I'm just wanting to see if I'm the next speaker. Monica Brown.
Okay, for Monica Brown?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, it's a little confusing.
I didn't understand you.
That's okay.
All right, go ahead.
I don't have a whole lot to say. I did come in late, and there weren't any more agendas. So I would have liked to have handled my part differently. But I just, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you. This is mind-boggling, what you go through, and the study in the background, the hours, all of you. So much thought and so much energy going into these things. And so my comments were more about, oh, I thought about the Bible story about Nehemiah. And when you read the whole book, he heard what was going on in his city. The walls were broken down, right? And he was down, and the king noticed that. So I just think it's very interesting, he had a heart for his place. Now, we have people here who think if you don't have people buried in the cemetery, that you have no concern. And that's just far from truth. I think we have mothers and fathers and grandparents, all of us, are concerned about the future. And we have runaway government going on here, including the school. So I wasn't able to speak last night, but looking out for people, we had a trustee last night mention that she could only concentrate on the school. And I think that's way too narrow. And if we're in the county, which we are, we couldn't vote for the city council. But we got out and stumped for city council, because the city is important to us. The people in Precinct 2 are important to a lot of people. It's not just "my four and no more." So in that book, though, he worked really hard to fix the problems. And he was slandered, there were letters written, there was all kinds of snarky sarcasm going on. But he accomplished this goal, which was to rebuild. And that was beautiful. So I commend you for any effort that you do to help move forward, and to, and also pray and hope for innovation and thinking outside the box. Today, I heard good news that some students that are homeschooled have a booth at the Home and Garden Show. They're getting close to having 500 of their products ready for sale. And I think we have to, as a community, take on that entrepreneurial spirit, think outside the box, work together, solve our own problems, build our own ambulances, whatever it takes. What we're doing is we're buying whatever the brand-new thing is at the hugest price, and we won't even get it for two years anyway. Well, we could probably solve our problems if we just thought about it a little bit more. So I'm hoping for initiative, innovation, direct inspiration from God to solve our problems instead of just burdening people with higher and higher and higher tax burdens. That's exactly what's happening, even if you stretch it out to kingdom come. We'll all be in our graves, rolling over and over again, just like the other people are, over what we're doing to our children. Somebody has to stop it. We could be the point of the spear that everybody talks about by saying no to debt and saying yes to creative solutions. But I don't think that's gonna happen, actually. I think R and B is gonna stand for what they have already stood for. Just like when I came here two years ago to talk about the porn in the libraries, it's still there. And there's people in this room who will deny it, but it's there, and I can prove it to you. So you get what you get, and you get what you want. But I'm hoping for initiative, determination, and creative ideas. Maybe, maybe, maybe we double down, and we solve our own problems, and we don't just go for taxes. That's what I'm hoping for. And I hope we help these people, because it's unfair and it's unkind.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Wes Rawl.
Thank you. My name is Wes Rawl, and I live about a half a mile from the data center. And me and my wife have contacted several agencies across the state of Texas. I understand you guys are doing the best you can do with the power that you have. And I don't think the power that you have is gonna get it done. Is there any way you can assist us, you guys, in getting ahold of the governor or someone at the state level that could possibly change laws that empowers you to do what needs to be done to enforce what we need on digital Marathon, or Marathon digital? Is there any way? And y'all may have to get back to us through emails or whatever. But can we get some help getting our voice out to whoever we need to that can really change the scope of things, not just a $500 ticket? That's one thing I'm asking for. Is Marathon here today? I know you requested them to be here.
I did ask them to come, and they were, no.
Oh, that's, says a lot, right?
They were two representatives at the town hall, but I got a message early this morning that they weren't gonna be able to attend today.
Sure, sure. And I didn't have to work either, but also in Texas law, so if I understand this correctly, and I know y'all aren't, maybe this is a question for the constable, but hypothetically, if Greg Abbott had some rural property, you know, out in the country, and I bought the property next to him and put up a disaster siren that went 24/7, as long as I paid my $500 a day ticket, I could just continue to run that indefinitely? I mean, that's, you see what I'm saying? That wouldn't fly for him, or you, or anywhere, or anyone else in this room that owns property in the county. If I did that to you, you, I mean, it just doesn't make sense that if I can afford the $500 a day ticket, I can continue to run my siren, you know? It's very upsetting. We're half a mile from there. It was very loud last night. We didn't sleep much last night, you know? So it affects us every day. And I gotta say, too, that when you have to deal with this 24/7, it's not really right to put somebody under a three-minute cap, you know? This is something we deal with all day, every day. So have consideration. If someone wants to come up here and talk, and it takes them a little time, give them their time. Thanks.
Thank you. Has anybody signed up for speak that they have not spoken yet on item number 10? If not, that's all that I have.
I do, I do have a statement from another resident that couldn't be here today, that wanted me to read her statement. And I know she's been, we've been to her, Constable Shirley and I have been out to her property on several occasions. She lives just across the street, basically, from the data center. "I'm Cheryl Shadden. I live in Hood County, near the Bitcoin mine. The noise has been constant the last two years. None of my community were aware that this was coming. The noise from Wolf Hollow hasn't, hasn't been constant, although they were there, they were going to be, we knew there were going to be issues with it. They brought the homes, they bought the homes across the highway when Wolf Hollow 1 went in. As of November, the noise from the Bitcoin mine has dramatically increased. I have a video log of it, decibel meter it. I find it hard to believe Marathon didn't know noise from a Bitcoin mine was an issue. What they didn't know is my community is done with the detrimental effects from it. Upon taking, talking to my community, we realized we all have the same physical and environmental issues. Our ears ring, we have headaches, cardiac issues, anxiety, GI issues, and sleep disturbances. This constant noise detriment invades our homes, travels through walls, and prevents us from enjoying our property 24/7. When we wake up, the first thing we hear is roaring. Our animals and livestock are suffering detrimental effects. Ranchers have lost wildlife on their property. Were impact studies done prior to this onslaught? No. During any point in this timeline from Wolf Hollow 1 and 2 Bitcoin, no impact study has been done on the environment, nor people that live here. Why is that? People tell us to move. How can we sell our property? Nobody would buy them. Nobody in their right mind would live like this purposely. The noise barrier that was put in on the east side has not helped the community there. They are ill also. One resident has been so ill, her hair is falling out. Neighbors next door to me are ill. When one of them, when one of them were ill two years ago, when, oh, I'm sorry, when none of them were ill two years ago, one has lost his hearing as well. Living near the Bitcoin mine is like being held prisoner and having the interrogation tactics on loud noise blasted to you 24/7. With the inability to sleep, this makes it difficult for us to function at our jobs, let alone live. One resident had a husband dying, grandchildren at home. When the Arctic front came, the stress of the Bitcoin mine pulling electricity in homes struggling to stay heated led to a valve blowing at the Wolf Hollow 2. Would that valve have blown without that load on it? That blast woke the lady's family. Her grandchildren were startled, awake, and crying. The dog was scared, and her husband was dying. What family should have to go through that? When I called the sheriff's department about Wolf Hollow 2 sounding like it was going to explode, the deputy called me back, told me another deputy lives near, and they were just testing. So at 1:30 to 3:30, they were testing. I dressed and drove over there, spoke to the person in charge, asked what was wrong, valve blew. So it was the same valve that blew all night over the Texas summer heat. All night? Yes, I have known that to happen, as it has been since the Bitcoin load has been on it. Sending letters to the Texas state entities has gotten the response that it's up to us, but it is the commissioner's court and the county judge issue. This buck gets passed from Texas state to the county. Then when you ask the county to help us, they point the finger back to the state. In the meantime, my community suffers. This is a precedent here now. Bitcoin mines are invading Texas and communities like this. We need legislation to help. Someone needs to speak up for the people going through this and do something. Okay, I don't know how much time I've used, so I want to be courteous and just use the same three minutes. I don't know if anybody's been keeping track. As far as my community is concerned, Wolf Hollow 2 is a landlord leasing to a renter that is detrimental to this community. I find it hard to believe they didn't know what a horrendous impact this was going to make on the lives here. They certainly have some responsibility here as well. How many of you have spoken to the community on this suffering? Knocked on doors, offered to help? We want our lives back. We want to be able to have family over and enjoy our property. What has this done to our properties? We pay county taxes. Our county taxes need to be repaid to the people that can't enjoy our homes. You owe us money. When this community wants property taxes dropped because of detrimental, because of this detriment, you have dropped at our doorsteps. Is that revenue dropped in the county going to impress you now? This level of inhumanity is atrocious. It would, thank you for your, thank you for listening, but I'm not going to thank you for what was done without the slightest bit of research or concern for what is going, what we are going through. Cheryl Shadden.
Sheriff Rawl is closer than anybody.
So that's...
Okay. Is there anybody else that's lined up to speak? Okay. Let me just say something here. I'm gonna speak as a county judge who is an attorney. Everybody can appreciate quiet enjoyment of their property. That is a kind of a term of art that's used all the time to enjoy your property, the quiet enjoyment. And I sympathize with anybody that hears a noise, no matter what kind it is. If you've never been around road noise, you live by a busy intersection. We're developing the county all the time, in what was once very quiet in the country. Now you have an intersection, you have convenience stores coming up, you got big trucks pulling in and out, you got braking. You just got a lot of noise around here. I certainly am sympathetic to anybody that's subjected to any kind of noise. But let me make one thing specific- But let me make one thing specifically clear. Texas counties have no authority to regulate noise. Cities can. Cities have the power to enact ordinances like noise ordinance, braking ordinances when you come into a community. Cities can pass ordinances. So if a business or an activity is within the city limits of an incorporated city, they can pass an ordinance that can regulate the noise. Texas counties cannot. Let me just read something. Counties like general police power and may exercise only those powers expressly conferred upon them by the Texas Constitution and by the legislature. To date, the legislature has not conferred upon counties the authority to regulate noise in their unincorporated areas. Since at least 2009, various bills have been presented in legislative session that would have empowered counties to pass noise ordinances, but none of the bills made it out of session. Until the Texas legislature grants the state's counties authority to adopt noise ordinances, all Texas counties will remain unable to regulate noise. That unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, is the law right now. So if you're shaking your head in agreement, I guess you've done your research and you found that out.
Yeah, I agree 100%. I'm just worried it'll just, it's, it's not what happened or not to change. It stays law.
Yeah. I wish, I wish there were something that we could do for you. I wish there was something we could pass for you. There is something that we cannot do. What you're gonna have to do, if you want to do something, is go to your, to the legislature, go to your, your state senator, go to your representative. I hate to tell them about it. Of course, there are only several under this out there. And try to get them to, get the legislature to give counties the right to pass noise ordinances in unincorporated areas because it keeps extending. What was, you didn't need this years and years ago, but now you need it with all the growth that's coming in here. Like the gentleman said, he came here to get away from the traffic and to have the noise, and he didn't get either, it looks like. There's nothing, though, that we can do. This commissioner's court is powerless to enact something to regulate the noise. That's just the law, okay? I think Mr. Ferris, you had your hand up first.
Just a simple, quick question. Is there a city close enough?
Please come up to them.
Judge, can you speak into your mic too, please?
Just a simple question. Is there a city close enough that can incorporate it quicker than the legislature might pass a law?
I don't know. You'd have to talk to the city about that. See if they want the responsibility about that. We got, what about that? Come on up here and answer this question. I'm sure that the city would incorporate you.
2019, the state legislature prohibited cities from involuntary annexation.
That's right.
So you're five, you're five miles from the city limits. If all the property owners between here and there and Wolf Hollow wanted to be annexed, they could petition and the council could consider it. But there is no such thing as the ability to go annex somebody that doesn't want to be annexed. Thank you.
There's your question, okay? I don't know who was next, Mr. Highsmith, I think you were.
While you're walking up, Mr. Highsmith, I have spoken with Shelby Slosson and Senator Brian Birdwell's office, and they are aware of the issue. As you all know, the legislature doesn't meet again until about a year from now, January 2025. But bills have to be started early. So I have engaged Representative Slosson, and we will, I hope, soon be meeting to discuss this.
Well, my, my question again is, can this be considered a public health emergency? Which takes it beyond the realm of noise because you've got people who are, there's evidence that is affecting their health. So that's my, my question for the court.
Well, the law goes on to say that it's a presumed noise if it's 85 decibels or above. I don't, I don't know about that. I don't, I don't know. That emergency, I really don't know about that. Again, what that's going to take is some high powered, it's going to take some legal authority, probably legal precedent to file a lawsuit on that. That's, that's an angle that maybe is available to you. I, I don't know about that. I just know right now that the county cannot take any action whatsoever to regulate the noise.
Now, this isn't really trying to regulate the noise. This is considering it a health emergency.
Well, you're gonna need expert advice on, expert testimony on that for some very learned people that can qualify in a courtroom as being experts on that particular topic that it is affecting health or whatever the requirements are under that emergency bill, okay? Which is beyond our scope. So, okay? So that's what's so frustrating about that is to keep coming up here and thinking that, that the county here, that the commissioner's courts can do something. We are powerless to do anything. I sympathize with you people, I really do. I, I don't live out in that direction, and I don't, I don't know what it's like. And I don't, and I don't question anybody with what they're saying, what they're, what they hear all day long, so.
Just think about having a leaf blower right by your ear 24/7.
I'm not through yet. So please, give us some deal, what we can do, if there's anything we could do. I would be all for it. I would make the motion to do something. But we just powerless to do anything until the legislature gives us that power, okay? That's my opinion. Yes, Ms. Highsmith? Are y'all on the same side today? The last time y'all were here, y'all were opposite one another. I just don't want to be the commissioner's court spreading discord here at Valentine's Day between the Highsmiths, okay?
My name is Cindy Highsmith, and I live at 9712 Belchase, and that's in Baccan. And I was following what Commissioner Samuelson was saying. And I think I have talked about, or talked with a couple of the commissioners about this. So Wolf Hollow, from what I understand, leased this land for the Bitcoin operation, okay? They leased the land. You're giving them a tax abatement. They did not do their due diligence. They did not look into, all they had to do was do what John did and pull out the Bitcoin magazine, and they would have known that there was a noise issue with Bitcoin mining. So they did not research, they didn't do anything, and they went ahead and leased this. So, you know, maybe they should pay a price for doing that. Maybe they need to have their tax abatement taken away from them until they can put some pressure on Marathon Digital to do something about this. And, you know, what John's saying is they bought the cheap fans. US Bitcoin bought the cheap fans. Well, maybe Marathon Mining needs to invest in some better fans. Or the reason why John tells you that we can't hear it inside of our home is because our home has that foam. We, the home that was built, that we own, has, what is that foam called, John?
Polyurethane.
Yeah, it's a polyurethane foam. We don't hear anything inside of our home. It's amazing. So maybe they can do something like that. My point is, is that, you know, these people, I saw, I was driving home from church, and I saw Commissioner Wilson standing out there Sunday. Yes, Sunday. And boy, I told John, I said, stop the car, I want to go over there. And, you know, so, I mean, he, he, we're all screaming at each other, you know, to talk. And, you know, so I don't know what other, I know Nanette's been out there, but I don't know who else has been out there. But this is, this in just a little like street noise, Judge Massengill, this is horrendous. This is, this, y'all need to try to do something.
I said, I'm not questioning the noise level. I didn't say that.
Well, I know that. You're not, you're not saying that these people are getting up here making stuff up. I know that. But just think about, you know, some kind of punitive way to get to Marathon Digital because I think it speaks volumes that they didn't come today. You know, that says something about people when they won't even come and discuss the issue in front of this court. That's disrespecting, and it tells you they're just as guilty as sin.
So that, that's part of the reason that I brought that history up about the tax abatement because it looks to me, and it's not on the agenda today, but it is the history of what happened with the, with the original approval that there was an intent to modify the current abatement with Wolf Hollow to carve out that property. Because in the current situation, they're getting, Wolf Hollow, the power plant, is getting abatement on the property that's being leased, and they're also getting income from the property that's being leased, and they're also getting paid for the electricity that they're selling to the Bitcoin plant. So Bitcoin mine, so.
Let me be clear on this. The Bitcoin operation is getting no tax abatement.
Right.
They're getting zero tax abatement. In fact, they paid close to $2 million in property taxes to the school and the county. So they're getting no tax abatement whatsoever. That was researched and, and I'm not sure, is Wolf Hollow still getting their tax abatement, Mr. Mills?
Yes.
I guess they are, but they're in the whining years of it. That was passed by a whole different commissioner's court. Nobody was here when Wolf Hollow got the tax abatement. But anyway, but let's be perfectly clear. The Bitcoin operation is paying their ad valorem taxes on all those computers out there. And the county and the school are getting those taxes. So there's no abatement about that.
No, there's, there's no abatement. But I'm saying the, what, what the intent was from the prior commissioner's court on November 9th, from reading what all of you said, was there was an intent to carve out that footprint from the Wolf Hollow abatement. Because now the abated property is also leased. So as I said, there, but to, to Judge Massengill's point, I did research with the appraisal district. And in 2023, which is the first year that the assessments were on the owners of prop, owners of, it's not the real property, but other property, personal, business, personal property. The total was $428,000 in county taxes in 2023. And then, as you know, there's a much larger piece that goes to the school board, the school district, sorry.
Anyway, that's all discussion now high noon up here.
Hang on, hang on, Judge. I just have one thing that I wanted to say. We'll put this succinctly. You've got somebody down there being a bad neighbor. I have gone down there and listened to this thing, and it's affecting people around. We may be powerless as a commissioner's court to do anything about this, but I will happily lend whatever voice effort that I can do to help in this, to help in your fight here. Let me know, and I will, I will participate in that absolutely.
Yep.
That's it. Out there Sunday, that was not my first trip out there. I've been out there probably six, seven times over the last two years. One of the questions, you know, the things, they put up that supposed wall that was going to stop part of it. It may have stopped part of it, but they, they're missing the mark, in my opinion, on where the wall should be, number one. Second question I have for Mr. Mills is, how high can the wall go legally? You know, can it go as high as a telephone pole? It really needs to be about 20 foot on the, that's on the side of Mambrano Highway to be able to block any noise that's, you know, coming out. The other, you know, but that's something that, you know, we'll have to address also. So there is a problem out there. But as, you know, Judge Massengill stated, with the state, is our hands tied, literally, at this point.
Did you have a question for Matt?
Okay. It's high noon here, and that ends our discussion. We're going to go to item number 11. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the amended election judge appointments for the remainder of the 2023-2024 term. Is Stephanie Cooper here? She's not, but I've seen it. I make the motion that we approve the amended election judge appointments that's attached to the order that we, that we've gotten from her up there. Has everybody read it?
Yes, sir.
I hear second?
Yes, sir.
Second.
All right. Judge Massengill made a motion to approve the amended election judge appointments for the remainder of the 2023-2024 term, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously 5-0. Item number 12. Discuss and take appropriate action to reappoint Steve Berry to serve as Hood County's Board of Directors member on the Syntex Rural Transportation District for a two-year term. Yes, sir. Mr. Steve Berry.
Good morning, good afternoon, Judge and Commissioner.
Yeah.
This will be my seventh time to be appointed to this board. And I went to Commissioner Eagle's office and took him the letter that the Syntex board put out. And Ms. Samuelson is the newest commissioner that's been on the board. Says I was last appointed two years ago. A little history for rural rail districts real quick, and I'll be very cognizant of your time. You've been here a long, long morning. But it's funny that I'm here about transportation, and your first agenda item was about transportation. It's been said that we're not going to stop growth. And what happened to me is the growth of gas and oil business. Back in, when I sat at your seat, we had Diane Locke, that was actually the appointee for Syntex. And about 2007, when I was elected, about 2011, when Barnett Shale became in, we started having issues with Cresson and along the railway. So Judge Rash asked me if I would sit on this board, and since then, I've been on the board, as you said, about 12 years. Been reappointed by this court minus Ms. Samuelson. What rail districts do, in 1981, the 67th Texas Legislature put a rural rail districts in place to basically protect rail lines that were being dumped across the west, out in the Panhandle and out in the west Texas areas. So our Syntex Rail District is Central Texas Rail District, is made up of five counties. It is Johnson, Hood, E. Rath, Comanche, and Brown Counties. We're a five-county board. We meet about three to four times a year. Basically, what we do mostly is we deal with private crossings. I just talked to City Manager Kaufman about North Houston. There's a concern about North Houston, how rough it is when you cross that area. And the fact is, inside the rails itself is a concrete pad. It seems to be a text odd issue because it's coming up to that. So when I met with Mr. Eagle, he asked me what we basically did. There's three things. We preserve and protect, which basically if someone calls and says they have an issue with railroad coming across their property on private property rights, our board gets involved. Fort Worth Western is the short rail that runs up and down our railroad through our community. Burlington Northern, Santa Fe, they're long rails. They run up and down all the long rails and go out and commute it through interstate and intercommerce. But short rails make up most of these rural rail districts that are from the Gulf all the way to the Panhandle. Fort Worth Western being that, that one, obviously, it came on my radar when they were blocking Cresson at the bypass. That's why I got involved, and that's one reason I was the appointee. But the railroad mainly runs in Hood County and Precinct Four, Commissioner Eagle's precinct, and Commissioner Andrews across Toler and La Pen Side. We do have a spur that goes down to the nuclear plant that when I was first on the court was Commissioner Precinct Two, and now I think it's been basically taken out and put in one, I believe. But that's the main rail. But that's the main rail areas we have. My job at, Commissioner Eagle asked, "So, when someone calls and has a complaint, I can pass them to you?" I said, "Absolutely, okay." We do meet quarterly. We take up easements for when someone's doing a pipeline. We discuss that as well. We talk about that. When we did have the gas and oil boom in Johnson County and Hood County, we had a lot of those on our agenda. Honestly, our last year and a half or so, our agenda's not been very large. It's mainly when they come in and replace rail. Sometimes they take out a farmer or rancher's private crossing from one side of their property to the other. They've used it for a tractor or a trailer. The people who replace the ties don't know that, and so, we get a call. Farmers have an easement, a procured easement granted by, actually, the railroad years ago, and we go back, and they have to go back and put that in. We do have the authority, I think Mr. Eagle and I talked about it, and law, Chris Kaufman. We do have a authority by the legislator to do bonds. So, our rail district could help in the Commerce Center with a spur or somewhere in Crescent if someone wanted to come in and do a spur or a bond. It has to be paid back the very same way. Not a bond to the county, but it would be a bond that we would take on as a taxing entity. We have that authority as well. But I serve at the pleasure of the Commissioners' Court. I've enjoyed my time. Mainly, the five individuals that serve, we've gotten to know each other, and mainly, it's, I learned a lot about the railroad that I had no idea we would do as, as a Commissioners' Court. If someone else wants to serve, I'd be glad to pass that, that torch, but I'd be glad to serve another two years if it's so of your desire. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer any of your questions.
I think we have one speaker. Harold Granik was speaker. You signed up to speak on 12. Is this?
Yeah.
You want to serve on the board?
Wanted to say that although I frequently didn't agree with Steve, he's worked for the county for a long time, done a good job, support his reappointment if he accepts it.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Granik. All right. Anybody else have anything else to say? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, now that Dr. Granik has given his okay, I want to make the motion to reappoint Mr. Berry to serve as Hood County's Board of Directors member on the Syntex Rural Transportation District for another two-year term.
Second.
Got three seconds here. Well, that's pretty popular. I guess we want you to serve up there.
Probably because it's lunchtime.
Yeah, that's something to do with it. Commissioner Wilson, seconded by, motion made by Commissioner Eagle to reappoint you to the Syntex Rail Board for another two-year term, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Judge, one more thing. Mr. Berry, I want to thank you for your service. Thank you for explaining to me and being willing to be of service to the county. I really appreciate it, and I wanted you to be able to let the people know what, what this organization does. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Eagle, you and I have always been across this at one way or the other, from my term to your term, but we're all still people, and at the end of the day, we need to treat each other with respect and the opportunity to work together, because we need to unite, unite our community and grow back together. I, I will say this, Fort Worth Western is always willing to come down, and maybe not an agenda like you had today, but will always come down and give us a presentation on how many cars pass through our county, what passes through our county. You heard Mr. Kaufman say, "With $1.61 a tax, a taxing for our city school in our county," and in my profession today, we are not going to get smaller. As many people as, as y'all get complaints, you do not want to grow. Land is going to sell before cattle, and hey, I can promise you, we're going to get nothing but bigger. So, I applaud this court for at least looking at Old Granbury Road and spending money to possibly do have alternate routes. I do applaud y'all for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Okay. All those in favor for appointing the illustrious Steve Berry for another two-year term, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You got it unanimously. Thank you. All right. Item number 13. Consider and take appropriate action to promote a jailer, starting pay $46,000 to Corporal Step 1, $50,000, effective Monday, February 12, 2024. Hello, Eric.
All right, Judge, Commissioners.
Sheriff.
Doing good. We had an opening for our corporal position in the jail. We had a few apply for the position. We conducted interviews, and we've decided to go with Mr. Garrett Lewis. He was a supervisor for us, and then he left our agency and went to another county, Lano County, and they hired him as a supervisor. For family reasons is why he left, and for family reasons, he, he brought them back, back home to Hood County. So, we hired him back, and he's been really good since he's been back. He applied for the position, and we decided to go with him. So, looking forward to his leadership as it continues in the jail.
Okay. Good deal. All right. Sheriff, you go along with that? 100%, huh? He's giving a thumbs up. He can't speak. I'm not going to make you speak anymore. I know you're losing your voice. Okay. We got some people signed up, just, no, no, we don't, not on 13. All right. Any further discussion on 13? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I make a motion to approve promoting a jailer, starting pay of $46,000 to Corporal Step 1, $50,000, effective Monday, February 12, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to take appropriate action to promote the jailer, starting at $46,000 to Corporal Step 1 at $50,000, effective Monday, February 12, 2024, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five-zero. At this time, thank you very much. At this time, at 12:12 PM, we're going to convene into a public hearing to discuss and consider Hood County abatement policy guidelines. So.
All right. Yeah, Judge, along with the city of Granbury, we had a project brought to us of building a spec building over in the Granbury Commerce Center. It's a, that area, as we all know, has been sitting there undeveloped for years and years, and we've gotten a proposal to put a 39,000-square-foot building in there, and they've asked for an abatement of 50% ad valorem for up to seven years. The first step in this process is to put the tax abatement guidelines on, to have, to have the guidelines in place, and so, that's, that's what we've got here today.
We got some speakers here. I guess number one is Cindy Highsmith.
Robert Caver.
Who?
Robert Caver.
Oh, okay. That's what happens when you get, yeah, I'm sorry.
Good morning, or afternoon, whatever noon. Thanks for letting me speak. I know there's a lot of things you can't do, but you guys have the power of, at the source of problems that can occur longer term. So, I want to talk to you about the future a little bit and your document. What I see in there is an area where you're trying to attack certain types of industries or developments to Hood County, and I really wonder, what kind of research did you guys conduct to determine that these were the five industries that were well-suited for Hood County? I'm not asking you to respond, I'm just, that's the kind of questions I would ask. And what justification did you select those? Because one of those, I noted on there, is a industry called Customer Solutions, North American Industry Code of 561990. That's a call center. Is that the kind of technology that you're trying to attract here in Hood County? If you want to get technology firms, go after firms like software engineering people and the software developers, nanotechnology people, not call centers. That's not going to do anything really for the county. And I would suggest that you not speculate with real estate. Don't give abatements, abatements to people that are speculating real estate. You're just putting margin money into the hand of the developer. Okay? So, you have a great location here. Focus your efforts on attracting people. You have a great place in Granbury. That's why I chose to live here. You have five research universities here within an hour and a half. You've got three medical schools. You've got Fortune 500 companies that employees and the like would like to live here and like to have companies here. Spend more time really trying to go after people that are going to make a substantial difference in the quality of life, and for our youth here, that can give them opportunities for career paths with really highly-regarded companies and industries. Okay? The other thing I think that I would like for you to consider making some adjustments to is the application itself. It provides scant information for you guys to make a decision. Frankly, I don't know how you make a really good long-term decision, well-informed with the, with the level of information that's required on that application. I don't see anything that it really addresses what's the impact it's going to be on the county's infrastructure, water, sewer, utilities. I, I don't see that, even with the one you're looking at today. You know, consequences of not having an environmental impact study. That's why we're having this thing with item 10. Okay? The yellow Viking thing across where I live in, in Plantation, Pecan Plantation, you just agreed for $7.6 million in fire trucks. Does that equipment have the ability to put out lithium battery fires? There's a giant facility over there that's full of lithium batteries. You're going to have Teslas and all kinds of other VV, EV vehicles coming through town. Do we have the equipment to put out those kind of fires? You know, I'm just really suggesting that you try to get much more information. When some, a company is coming to you and they're asking for an abatement to move here, think twice about that, because you have a lot to offer here in Hood County. Because don't make some mistakes like some of my hometown did in Sherman, Texas. You know, they've got this gigantic mega campus going in from Texas Instruments, and man, I love TI. I worked there. They gave me my first job out of the military. They're a great company. But if the city fathers and the county commissioners, I think, had had more information about what they were doing from a standpoint of competition, they wouldn't have had to give up all that $67 million a year in taxes for the, for the city. City has now had to pay, put up a $200 million bond to build the infrastructure, to provide water to those plants, and the city of Howe, little community down the road, about six miles with about 4,000 residents, is now being shut off from water from City of Sherman. They're going to have to build their own water treatment plant. So, what I'm talking about is the decisions you as a body have to make have a long-lasting effect and sometimes unintended consequences. So, get more information. At least make somebody, don't say may require, say will require, an environmental impact study of how it's going to affect your infrastructure and the environment. And if you don't do that, I think you could make other s-. Here's one more thing. Hoodwinked, Sherman, Texas, Grayson County Commissioners' Court, they were told, "If you don't give us these abatements in the amount that we really need, we can't compete. We have to move this thing to Singapore." Holy Christ. Singapore is the highest cost of a living country in the world, highest cost of housing in the world. $1.6 million a home average versus $287,000 in Sherman. So, I'm just saying, I think you try to do a good job. I know you're all well-intended people. All I'm saying is, get more information on what's going to affect your infrastructure and what's going to affect this local environment, and I thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you. Okay. Ron Roberts.
This is concerning the general tax abatement policy, and I just had one thing I wanted to offer that you might change. And on page three, under definitions, down the fourth paragraph, it's abatement compliance term. It says, "The period of time specified in a tax abatement agreement during which the recipient of a tax abatement must comply with the provisions and conditions of the tax abatement agreement and file an annual report with the county, which outlines and documents the extent of the recipient's compliance with such provisions and conditions." And my recommendation is that that be more, more specific and not quite as general. The date needs to be that when they need to file that report, whatever it is, whether it be possibly April 1st, that needs to be stated. It needs to be presented not to the county, but to the Commissioners' Court, so they've got a specific person to give it to. And they need to have a year-end financial statement audited and signed by CPA that includes the number of employees and the total salaries for the year, excluding owner's salary and owner's bonus. It's just more specific, and it needs to be a CPA certified for their financial statement for that year, in my opinion.
Thank you. Okay. All right. The next speaker is Cindy Highsmith.
Well, I already introduced myself, so I'm just going to get right to the point. I stood here, it wasn't quite a year ago. It was February 28th of 2023, and at that time, the tax abatement guidelines were on the agenda. There was a 5-0 vote to table those guidelines at that time, and it meant so much to me that I remember what each of the commissioners said at that time. And I am dismayed to see that this is back on the agenda again, because when, what you said when you tabled those guidelines, you had a big sign, and it said, "Hood County welcomes you, but when you come, everybody who comes will pay taxes here. We're not going to pick favorites here. There's no cronyism here. Everybody pays taxes." I distinctly remember what Commissioner Eagle said, because I stood up and clapped for him, and he said, "We're going to have free enterprise here. Everybody's gonna, you know, there's not, he, he said that we were never, not going to do this again, and I'm so discouraged to see it on the agenda again." Because this county, and you, we've been here over three hours, and everybody that's come up here has said what an amazing county, how much growth there is, that we're, you know, I know that the Fed has said that they're going to drop interest rates four times this coming year, but even with that, I live in Pecan, and the Anthony's decided that they didn't, you know, wanted to get out of Pecan and were going to develop the whole thing, and then they're going to be gone. Well, I thought, at that time, I thought, nobody's going to buy those lots, nobody's going to build houses there. These interest rates are so high, John and Cindy Highsmith would never do it. Well, ha-ha's John and Cindy Highsmith, because guess what? Those lots are sold like hotcakes, and those houses are going in, orchards is, there's bukus of houses, and these are expensive homes. Over there in the landings where our secondary strip is, those things are going like, there, there's a house a day being started over there. Okay, what does that tell you? We've got a little mini Buc-Ee's right at the corner of 144 and Mambrano Highway. It's great big. They, they, they've invested bukus of money to put in this facility. Did they get a tax abatement? No. Okay, on Mambrano Highway, there's a warehouse that's gone in next to the Dollar General. Did they get a tax abatement? No, but they're building it. I bet every one of the, you, you guys can tell me all the developments that are happening in your area. You do not need to have tax abatement guidelines. And Bob went through them, and my husband's gone through them, and I looked at them, and I could pick them all apart, but what I'm asking you to do is to table them again and put that sign out there that there's no favorites here, everybody pays taxes. Thank you.
Okay. John Highsmith, I guess you're going to take the same position, or might as well, okay?
He's, he's the closer, Judge. He's the closer.
I'm in for the close here. All right. So, if we're talking about tax abatements, why would a county give tax abatements? I can see two big reasons. High unemployment, our surrounding areas are growing and you're not. So, in other words, the county could be, even be shrinking, but this certainly is not what I see. And companies I talk to, they say they have trouble finding employees. That's, that's one of their biggest problems. So, the major question I see is- So the major question I see is, do we really need to reinstate tax abatement guidelines at this time? You can always do it later. Some of these things change. But right now, we're in an era of growth. We're close to Dallas-Fort Worth. And we have decent property rates compared to other counties, good and safe schools, excellent local government, good traffic situation. Just look at Travis County or Plano, places like that. We have low crime, reasonable property values when compared to the metro area. And we're close, but we're not too close to Dallas-Fort Worth. So if we don't have high employment or lagging growth and we have these great attributes for a business, why do we need to give tax abatements? They're going to come anyway. And also, just philosophically, why do we want to favor larger businesses over small business? The big boys have enough advantage as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Harrell.
Well, good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak on this issue. It's really an important issue, particularly as you all sit before me as Republicans, proud Republicans. The Republican platform of the state of Texas says that Plank Number 11, "A free enterprise society unencumbered by government interference or subsidies." We believe in that. Republicans also believe in Plank Number 94. "We support repealing Tax Code Chapter 312, County and Municipal Property Tax Abatements." As Republicans, we don't believe that the government should get involved in this type of activity at all. And I would urge you not to move forward with these guidelines. However, if you do choose to move forward with the guidelines, and as Mrs. Highsmith just alluded to a moment ago, a quick review of the guidelines as they are proposed by this court can tell you that this document is fatally flawed in so many areas. Number one, in Paragraph Three of the document, it says that the tax abatement will provide for the creation of 20 new full-time jobs at or above the county annual average salary. But there's no time limit in regards to those jobs proposed in the policy. In Paragraph Four, the policy states that the abatements would apply except for the job creation requirement for industrial and office spec or shell buildings. And I want to leave it there, office spec or shell buildings. So the policy outlines all kinds of activities that would be considered for the property tax abatement. However, if you're talking about spec buildings or shell buildings, there's no follow-up in regards to what kind of activity actually takes place. So therefore, we shouldn't grant an abatement on that basis at all. In Paragraph 7.2 of the tax abatement calculation, although this policy establishes the maximum percentage of abatement that may be available, and then that same paragraph goes on to say, "The tax abatement shall be negotiated on a case-by-case basis and may be less or more than the maximum available percentage specified in this policy." So it contradicts itself right there. I also agree with some of the previous speakers in regards to Section Eight of the policy. We certainly need to add an infrastructure impact study to any of the abatements that are granted. There's no doubt about it. You have to have that in order to make sure that the project that you're looking at has the right impact on Hood County. We've discussed this ad nauseam in here earlier because of what we're dealing with at Wolf Hollow. In Paragraph 8.3, I would respectfully request that you add a public comment period to any consideration of tax abatements that might be given by Hood County. And finally, in Paragraph 9.7 of the policy itself, and this is key, it says, "The recipient of a tax abatement may sell, assign, transfer, or otherwise convey any of its rights under a tax abatement agreement to an affiliate of the recipient as defined in the tax abatement agreement or as security to a lender of the recipient provided that the county assigner..." On and on and on. Here's how we got into problems out there in Wolf Hollow in the first place. We should never allow a tax abatement to be conveyed or assigned. And I would respectfully request that you remove that from the policy. Therefore, I'm asking that you table this issue until this policy... I mean, if you're going to grant a tax abatement and you're going to pursue that, which I would ask that you don't, but if you are, this policy is not the right policy. It needs to be revamped, reworked. Please. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the speakers I have on 14 on the deal. Any... It's your motion.
Well, I think that I've heard...
The table it?
Yeah, I think we need to table that. There's some things that we need to look through there.
Motion been made by...
Oh.
At 12:31 PM, we convened back into Commissioners Court. Yes, Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table this.
I second. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to table Number 14 about the Hood County Tax Abatement Policy Guidelines, second by Commissioner, County Judge Ron Massengill. This brings us to Item Number 15. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve...
Wait, we're going to take a vote?
Oh, we got a vote. It's late.
I'm not in a hurry, nor am I hungry, okay?
I have snacks.
I've been up since seven o'clock with my Ju'Nol here.
I can share snacks.
So all those in favor of tabling the Hood County Tax Abatement Policy Guidelines, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero.
I'll go ahead and pull 15.
Do what now?
I'll pull 15.
You're going to pull 15? Okay, 15 is pulled, 16 is pulled, 17. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve and authorize the county judge to sign purchase agreements for two commercial clothes dryers and a sink disposal for the county jail from Fund 55 not to exceed $20,000. Here got Sheriff Eric Terryville again.
I'll try to talk again. This, normally I'd be up here alongside of our maintenance director, but we don't have one and stuff has fallen apart pretty bad up there. So I asked that maintenance help get some prices and purchasing, get some prices to figure this out so we could get... We've got, started out with three dryers in there, now we're down to one dryer. And one caught fire here a few weeks ago, month or so ago. And the one there, other one, they've been taking parts off of because they're so obsolete. So I asked that you approve this and also the garbage disposal, the sink disposal, it's been out for a long time. So we need to get some of this stuff fixed and keep things going up there at the jail. Do you have anything to add?
I just have a question about the funding. And I've mentioned to our auditor, Stephanie Matlock, that rather than Fund 55, this should come from contingency. It's about almost $17,000, correct, with the... Is that the right amount? Okay, not to exceed 20. Would that be appropriate?
It seems like when the budget was put in place, there was more latitude in Fund 55 rather than contingency. So I would maybe consider that in your decision.
Okay, but there's $230,000 in contingency.
There's funds there.
So you all right with taking the $20,000 from Fund 55?
It's okay either way, but I think maybe if you were, if it were up to me, I would prefer it go from 55.
Fund 55?
Right.
Yeah, that's equipment, right? That's...
No, that's capital. That's the... Contingency is for unexpected expenses.
Yes, and typically when you create a budget, the contingency is what you use that way. But when we were doing our budget last year, it seems like these small equipment purchases were put into that Fund 55 anticipation rather than the contingency, so.
I think that is kind of historically how that's budgeted, so.
So any other... I'll make a motion if there's no other comments to approve that authorize the judge to sign purchase agreement for two commercial clothes dryers and sink disposal for the county jail from Fund 55 not to exceed 20,000.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to authorize the county judge to sign the purchase agreements for two commercial clothes dryers and a sink disposal for the county jail from Fund 55 not to exceed $20,000. Any further discussion?
About time on that disposal. I was over there last year and it was...
Yes, sir.
Anyway, good. Sorry, Judge.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all, gentlemen. Okay, this brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any commission wish to pull or question any item on the consent agenda?
I have a question about line item transfers, C.
Okay, what's your question?
Okay. So will this take the individual out to the end of March? Is that the intent?
Yes, ma'am.
End of March, okay. That was it.
To his retirement date, yeah.
Anything else? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So made. Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Okay, the next item is... No road ops, Mr. Lenny? No road ops. Okay, good. Thank you. Development, Mr. Clint Head. Set public hearings for the following replats, Blue Branch Road, Lot 59R, and the landings, 329R. What date?
Staff recommends setting public hearing for the March 26th, Commissioners Court.
March what?
March 26th.
March 26th. Okay. We hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion. We set public hearing for March 26th for Blue Branch Ranch, Lot 59R, and the landings, Lot 3292R.
Okay, both been made by Commissioner Andrews to set the public hearing for Blue Branch Ranch and the landings for March 26th, 2024, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Good. Next, public hearing to discuss and consider for the infrastructure development plan, Bandit Barrel RV. So at this time, at 22 till 1 PM, we're going to adjourn into a public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Head.
This side development plan is located at 8232 Paloxi Highway in Toler. It's a property adjacent to the Sledge Distillery. So this infrastructure development plan proposes to create 10 RV spots and will be served by private well and onsite sewage facilities. It's located on a 6.005 acres tract known as Lot 6R of Deer Valley Estates. There's no prohibition in the regulations for this area, and the number of spaces are allowed on this many acres served by a private well and it does not exceed 15 spaces on a senior well. And all comments have been addressed.
Any comment, question? If not, at 20 minutes till 1 PM, we adjourn back into Commissioners Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I make the motion that we approve the infrastructure development plan for Bandit Barrel RV Park.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the infrastructure development plan for Bandit Barrel RV, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Next, at 19 minutes till 1 PM, we convene into a public hearing to discuss and take appropriate action on the updates and our revisions to Section Roman numeral 2 subdivision regulations to Section 1.6. Mr. Head.
This revision to this section is to add a special exception to lots subdivided that are over 10 acres and are usually required to... And usually require the construction of a road which would start the plating process because of the need of public infrastructure. This allows the land to be subdivided with a shared driveway. It's a special exception that does away with... It gives them an exception to Section 6.7, which is a shared driveway restriction. We only allowed three or more. But if they adhere to these special exceptions, which gives us the power to keep it a driveway, they have reservations in their deed of who maintains that driveway and they have to have an easement and these 10 acres cannot be subdivided.
Well, we have one speaker to sign up for, Elizabeth Mercer.
I'll be quick because I really just have questions. I've read this, went in and I looked, and I'm hoping that you can explain them to me, Mr. Head, because I don't understand them completely. So you're going to have it part of the deed that the, that a specific individual takes care of the green area, which is the 10 acres. Is that right? Did I read that right? Like the special exception for those 10 acres, you're going to let the builder make that be a complete driveway? And then who's going to take care of the green and who's going to be responsible for the driveway?
That'll be on mutual land. It'll be an access easement. So all the private property owners will be responsible for the driveway.
Okay. All right, and so, and I read there was a turnaround again. Because I live in a dead-end road, I think that's great. I'm grateful that's there because that would just be a problem if you don't. And I know, because we have that problem now, thank you. So basically, there's not really any big change, except you're going to carve out a green and the property owners are going to be responsible for maintaining the drive.
This special exception just allows them to bypass the 6.7, which requires them to have a road after so many shared driveway accesses. Given that exception, we put these other deals in here basically to protect the county from ever having to maintain a driveway.
Okay, okay. Well, that makes perfect sense for the taxpayer. What does that mean for the roads? Because right now, like they're building in that, they're building Rochester Star Hollow behind me. And I'm not thrilled about that, by the way, thank you very much. But the roads look pretty good. I know that because I drove down them with my son just looking at them. What does this mean for the roads as they go in? Who's responsible? Are there going to be substandard roads? Are there going to be nice roads?
Well, this exception takes away the part that they have to build a road. This is, will not be a road, it'll be a driveway. We can't even refer to it as a road or they automatically fall under the plating requirements. So we can't tell them what to construct that road with, just an all-weather surface. But we do, because it's a special exception, we say it's got to be at least 22-foot wide driveway.
Let me, let me throw this out here because this is where...
I'm just trying to understand.
No, no, yeah, no, completely understand. Here's, here's what happened. This last legislative session, the legislature passed a law to remove the county from requiring plating on over 10 acres. Our rules, because we have Subchapter K, our rules can be more stringent than the state and override them. What I was looking for here is for us to be able to, you know, there's carrot and stick. I would like to put a carrot out there to developers to say, hey, here's something that you can still make money doing 10-acre tracks instead of coming in, having to build an asphalt road, having to go through the plotting and the, or the plating and the engineering and everything that's involved in that. By the time you put all those costs on the developer, they just about have to do the two-acre lots in order to recoup their, or to make any money on it. So, so if we, if we can promote the larger lots, and again, these end up being, this road's not on the county road maintenance system, no, I'm sorry, driveway, let me, let me use the correct terminology here. The driveway is not on the road maintenance system and the plaits in there, well, the tracks, I got to use the right words, will not be able to be subdivided. So you're getting the density spread out. You're getting less density per acre. This is... well, the tracks, I got to use the right words, will not be able to be subdivided. So, you're getting the density spread out, you're getting less density per acre. This is, you know, I've been talking to a, a developer, and he's got a, a 99 plot development that he's looking at, and he said, if we can do this, I can back this down and put 31 tracks in there, instead of the 99.
Yes, and this is the, this is the carrot he needs, we go to 10 acres.
Yes. And, and I don't think it's just him. I think that we're, we're pretty heavy in the, the two-acre inventory around here, and I think that we can all, you know, I know that you're a big fan of the larger, the larger well spacing and stuff like that.
Well, dropping right behind my home, so, yeah, I'm super excited about 10-acre.
Yes, so, yes, if we can encourage that type of development, I think that that would be, that would be a big win for everybody if we can go in and get bigger, larger, non-subdividable. So, these, these are 10 acres, and they're going to stay that way. You can't cut that up anymore.
So, if he had 300, if he has 300 acres, you're going to give him 10 acres, how much does he divide behind that? Because you're giving him 10 acres to put in the driveway, or it's every single?
Every single lot.
Yeah, they, they just have an easement across their property that says this driveway is providing an access easement to those properties behind.
Okay.
The county will never take over this road. So, if they want to, you know, they can come in and say, hey, you know, we, we can make money doing 15-acre tracks in here.
That's, I just wanted to understand, yeah.
So, yeah, this is, yeah, what we're doing is trying to get outside of that box, think outside a little bit, and instead of using a stick and telling people how they have to do it, provide an incentive if, you know, for lack of a better word, after the tax abatement stuff, pardon, pardon my, pardon my wording there, but, you know, to encourage that, the larger track developments, I think we all win with that.
Oh, thank you. That, I just wanted to understand, which is why I signed up? So, did you speak?
So, I think what, if I, what you're saying is that it's changing the economic equation for the developer, so that they can, in, they can do larger lots with, and, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, people are coming, our population in this country is growing, so they have to have somewhere to live. I would like to get outside that box and provide a, a way for them to get the better.
And I was asked to write this to lean towards that way, to encourage the less-density lots. And then, at the same time, my mindset is, well, working for developers all my life, I know that they're going to do whatever. So, I tried to write it in a way that would protect the county from ever having to take that over, and the taxpayers ever having to rebuild that road, which is now a driveway. So, the, the only way they could ever do that is if they come back platted and constructed a road to county standards.
Okay, so it could happen, but it's unlikely.
It's going to cost money.
Okay, yeah, right, okay, thank you, and I'm sorry to waste your time, I know this was a crazy day, but I wanted to understand.
You're always welcome to come and speak.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Bye.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, at 12 minutes till 1 PM, we're back in the Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the development regulations as amended here.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the revisions to Section 2 subdivision regulations to Section 1.6, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Thank you, Mr. Head.
Thank you.
Mr. Ms. Stephanie Matlock, Financial.
Hello. The Auditor's Office has reviewed all of the invoices in the amount of $1,452,690.19 for this court, and recommends payment.
Okay, good. Do I hear a motion?
If I move that we pay the invoices in the amount of $1,452,690.19.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the payment of invoices for the period ending February the 13, 2023, no, February, January 17 through February the 6, in the amount of $1,452,690.19, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And God bless you all, and you may be adjourned here at 10 minutes to 1.